Good evening and welcome. Are we recording? We are recording, perfect. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a manner consistent with... This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations, and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's quite an echo here. I don't know if there's anything you can do to alleviate that.
I don't know that I hear an echo, but I do hear a louder volume.
I hear it, I hear it.
All right, so before we continue, a technical glitch. Is there anything on the balcony that we can do to minimize an echo? Testing 123, is that better?
A little bit, yeah.
Testing 123.
Maybe move the microphone a little bit farther away from her?
Testing 123. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'll start again, take two. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation, unless required by law. We do have two public hearings this evening that will include the opportunity for public comment related to the subject of those hearings. For the record, I will now confirm attendance of the planning board members, those physically with us and those with us by Zoom. When I call your name, please say that you... Please respond that you are present. Paul Alpert.
Here.
Artie Crocker.
Here.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Excellent. And Natasha Spata.
Present.
And we note the chair is present, Adam Block is present. For the planning board, our Director of Planning, Lee Newman.
Present.
Very good, and Alex, we see you're here too. Thank you very much. For those participating in the meeting, please be aware that anything you share or state will be a matter of public record, and others may be able to see you. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda. After they conclude their remarks, board members will be asked for any comments, questions, or motions. I'll speak to the ground rules governing public comment when we get to that point. Our first agenda... Our first item on the agenda this evening is a continued hearing on Coca-Cola and their reservation for the property located at 9B Street. With us tonight are Evans Huber for the applicant attorney, and then we also have Eric Bednarik and Chris Noack from VHB.
Eric Bednarik is attending remotely and he's...
He's not here yet.
He's... He sent us an email saying he's waiting to be let in.
He's not an attendee, and that means he's allowed on as an attendee, so I believe him to be a malice. He might have said that before the meeting started, in which case he would have been able to be an attendee because the meeting hadn't started yet. But at this point, I don't know what I need.
Well, we'll just communicate with him and tell him to log in again.
Yes, that's not bad.
So that's him. Thank you very much. And then we also have, I believe, Mark Nogira and Dave Obano, Matt Lavanti, and Caitlin Glass, is that right? By remote?
Not here.
Okay. That's fine. I'll pass the baton to you, Evans. If you want to reach out or have someone from your team reach out to Eric to have him sign in, or you're ready to go?
So, Mark, are you able to reach Eric?
I emailed him, but what I'm going to do now is, since he's not here, I'm going to try and open up. I think I have it on my desktop here.
I have it.
Do you want to... I'm not in the meeting, but...
Okay.
I apologize, I apologize. I'm not operating with all of my...
Faculties?
Yes. I need to restart it, I need to restart, I'm so sorry.
Are we...
I'm going to stop the recording. Mark, do you concur?
Recording stopped.
I think I need to get an hour... All right, I apologize.
Recording in progress.
So for the... So for those of you who are just joining now, we had a technical glitch. We apologize, these things do happen, as does the rain, and we're now back in full function, so... Very good.
We're going to have a question, Mark, reminding everyone to use your mic.
Very good, so you guys, Evans, can share that microphone you guys have.
So, are you...
Maybe we can... Why don't you move that mic over to Evans?
Okay.
So, are you able to let Mr. Bednarik in?
Still have to let him go down, but as soon as he gets off, we can go over.
All right. Well, we'll just try to make do until he joins without it. But the reason, you know, it's important to have him participate, hopefully, is that what we wanted to present to the board tonight was the results of our review by the Design Review Board, what their comments were, how we've tried to address those, and those comments overlapped with some of the comments of the planning board the last time we were before the planning board regarding landscaping, as well as a comment about possibly increasing the recharge area on-site. And then there was also a comment or an inquiry about whether or not it would be possible to put some solar on the roof. So, we... Those are the three things we wanted to address with the board. Mr. Bednarik was going to be the person speaking about the details of the upgraded landscaping and planting plan. If he's not available... Oh, okay, we've got him on board.
He's here at the Zoom meeting.
I am available.
Okay. So, Eric, do you want to speak about the revised planting plan?
Certainly, let me just pop it up on the screen.
It's a little hard to hear you.
Okay. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, that's better, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. As Evans had mentioned, there's a few different things that we improved from the previous plans. And I'll just hop on over, let me just widen out the presentation. So we did have this open area in the previous plan that was proposed as just a grass open area. Island within the parking lot. And we converted that into bioinfiltration area with various plants around the perimeter that were added, including some winter berry, celeria, gray dogwood, and also some red maples. They're all noted here in the little plant symbol list. Doing a native wet seed mix within the basin area, and then a conservation seed mix that would be on the perimeter that we would expect to get inundated with snow to some degree and be able to maintain appropriately. That would also be made up of native seed mix. And of course, the island plantings were on the previous plan that were presented to the board a couple of weeks ago.
So just to refresh the board's memory, that triangular area that's now described as bioinfiltration basin was previously proposed as just grass. So the... So this... What we're planning... What we're now proposing to do there addresses two comments. One is to increase the on-site recharge, and the other is to improve the landscaping in that area.
But there's still grass in that triangle area with plantings on the perimeter.
But it's a different kind, it's a... What's it... Shrubs, shrubs and trees.
This would be a depressed area with a wet seed mix that can be inundated with some water time to time, and then a different seed mix that would be up level with the parking lot. So this... I believe this is depressed down a couple... Down in this area here. So these would be... Plantings would be located along the edge slope of the bioinfiltration area, and this would be set down a couple, three feet.
So the... So it's no longer... It's no longer grass, it's more... It's literally like a... Literally as a saying, it's a filtration of the...
Right, it's a rain garden, that's correct. So there'll be no maintained lawn.
Beautiful.
We've regraded the area so that the pavement pitches towards the middle, which we had before, but we've increased the area that goes there. We've created about 935 cubic feet of depression within that zone, where that water infiltrated into the ground prior to going into the catch basin.
And just let me know if you have any other questions, or I'll move on to the next slide. Now, of course, all these plants are native, and would, of course, enhance wildlife, and also just the cleansing of the water as well.
I'm sorry, Eric, I'm going to interrupt. I actually can't really hear you that well. Sorry to interrupt and for our Needham channel folks. Are the speakers on in the back here? Are we able to turn the volume up on those a little bit?
Can I ask one, Alex, or can we... Can I ask if maybe it's not integrated inside?
Yeah, I think I can jump in and walk you through these plans. I'm pretty familiar with them as well, so...
I'm sorry.
And they are a direct response to the questions that were asked by the board and the DRB.
Okay, so why don't we just go to the slide... Can you go to the slide that shows the corner of Kendrick and Third?
Certainly.
All right, so similarly, there was some ratty existing vegetation in that corner of the site. Right now, you do see an area that... That there's a line north of where Eric's cursor is now. That's still... That was in the previous plan. What we've highlighted is the supplemental plantings. There's an area of existing vegetation that'll be maintained and pruned, and then that'll be supplemented with a significant amount of new vegetation. The plant list is on the left, there's 10 more red maples. They're going in that area. 13 arborvitae, some red cedar, some more red twig dogwood, which is consistent with some of the plantings that were within the site, bringing that red color, which is, you know, very coke.
You're going up, not all the way on Kendrick Street because of the limit of where the...
Limited right of way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is a significant increase in the zone that the DRB and the board had commented on at our last hearing.
So if you see, for example, the plant drawings that are black and white on this, those were part of the previous proposal? And then all this stuff that's in color is additional stuff?
That's new, except for the clouded area that existing vegetation don't remain.
So in the... In the screen, is there any screening... You know, there's only so much you can do about screening. Is there any screening aspect added as you're heading up towards that... The defining spot where you're stopping? Is there any height to these? Is there any... What type of height is in that area? As you're looking at where the trucks are parking, heading towards the end of the planting area, what type of screening are...
So that the evergreens are, I believe they're in the six to eight feet range. And we have, yeah, we have 24 arborvitae and red cedar proposed. And mixed in with that, there's some... There's some ornamental grasses and some shrubs to provide that multi-tiered effect and, you know, really make an interesting corner.
I'm going to interrupt for a second. Jean, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I have wished to comment on this. May I?
Yes.
Yeah. I went and walked around this perimeter of the property on Saturday, and I observed that the plantings that existed at this corner, that now exist at this corner, are pretty scrubby and minimal. And I'm very pleased to see what you propose here now. I think going along Kendrick... One of the reasons I went out and walked right along there is I was uncertain where the point is, that the visibility for the public... Not that many people walk on that particular sidewalk, but for the public driving and just won't... You know, we want to give a nice appearance to the properties here. It seems like you've drawn the line just perfectly. That's where the chain link fence kind of veers in a little bit, and at that point, you really lose the visibility of any... Any new plantings that there would be. And so it's... I like, you know, you've got new plantings, you've got a mulch slope, and then going up Third Street, that was a little better maintained in that it seems that this... Perhaps it's difficult to... I mean, you can't... And perhaps it's difficult to mow along Kendrick Street because of this steep slope, and it's easier to mow or maintain along Third, but it... Yeah, Mr. Bednik is nodding. And by the way, as a person zooming in, I could hear Mr. Bednik very well. So it's a problem in the room, but not on Zoom, I just want people to know that. So, but the only question I have is, at the very corner where it says "existing vegetation to remain", and I see that a couple of trees are going to be removed, and I know there are a couple of trees that have just kind of almost fallen over, so I certainly don't have any objection to that. But will there be kind of a cleaning out of the area? Or you just... When you say "existing vegetation to remain", is it just going to be left alone the way it is?
There's a couple of trees...
Can you by chance hear me?
Sorry, Eric, I don't know if they can fix the problem in the room, but I'll see if I can answer this one for you.
Okay.
On the figure, you can see on the key, if there's a dashed line around the circle, that's an existing tree to remain. So there are a few that Eric went out in the field and took a look at and thought were worth saving, and those trees have been identified on the plan as existing vegetation to remain.
Anything else, Jean, or are you satisfied?
I asked about the kind of undergrowth. I mean, I see that farther along Kendrick, you're going to have a mulch, a slope, and remove lower growth and coat with mulch. But on the very corner, it simply says "existing vegetation to remain". To what extent will the vegetation right at the corner be improved and be put in condition to be maintained better as time goes on?
I can try and answer it if you can hear me online. Again, I don't know if anybody can hear me in the room, but I can answer so that she can hear me online.
That's great.
Okay. Yeah, so there... Basically, the only trees that are suggested to be removed are the ones with the Xs, which are three of them right here. They're very scraggly-looking vegetation. I do have a picture of it, but they're just very thin, very scraggly-looking. But then that would be all replenished with all these plantings here. So again, you'd have a mixture of arborvitae, cedar that are going to eventually get approximately 20 feet, 15, 20 feet tall in the corner here. That would be the backdrop on the top of the slope, up near where the view, where you really want to screen. There'll be backdrop with a few shade trees back here. And then all along the front, you have this really nice layering of ornamental grasses. The dark little green circles here would be inkberry, which is nevergreen shrub. You have red twig dogwood in here as well. And then a foreground layer of ground cover to kind of minimize erosion along the walkway, where you have some low, over here to the two colors here, the green and purplish-blue, you have some bar harbor juniper and bearberry, which are very salt tolerant, so any salt that's applied to the walkway, they'll be able to tolerate that quite well, and they'll be able to really just coat in all over this slope right here with some really nice ground cover.
Thank you. And now I think I understand better. When there's an arrow that points to that particular green circle and says, or greenish-blue circle, and says "existing vegetation to remain", you mean that particular bush or tree?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so there's definitely going to be a big improvement to that corner.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I still would like, if we close the hearing, to be able to have the Design Review Board...
We're not done.
...give us their, you know... Because we rely very much on the Design Review Board when it comes to their views on landscaping, and they did want to see changes, and these are responsive to their letter, but I'd like to give them the opportunity to say so themselves. But thank you, thank you very much, this is lovely.
So there is another area on the site that we have also upgraded in response to the comments of the DRB. And this board, but mostly in response to the comments of the DRB. So, Chris or Eric, you want to speak to that? Go ahead.
So the DRB asked us to remove the lawn along Third Ave and replace it with ornamental grasses, something taller that would require less maintenance, and that's what this gets shows. Since we're going to have taller ornamental grasses that are thicker and closer together, we've replaced the ornamental fence, which didn't seem to be, you know, very well received in that area because of the visibility through it with a black vinyl-coated chain link fence that'll... That'll be behind the ornamental grasses.
What the comment from one of the DRB members was that the grass along there doesn't look that good. It, you know, requires water, a lot of water, to, you know, sort of look healthy, and it just kind of collects, collects stuff. And so the suggestion was that ornamental grasses, which are taller, would both require less maintenance and look better, you know, throughout the summer months. So that is what this proposal is intended to address along that whole length of Third Avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there other changes you had mentioned or modifications to the stormwater or landscaping and the solar?
So those are the three sort of major aspects of the upgrading to the landscaping. The Third Avenue, a whole length of Third Avenue, the corner of Third Avenue and Kendrick, and the infiltration basin with the additional landscaping. So those are the various changes that we're proposing to address comments both of this board and the Design Review Board. And I think, you know, I'm not sure whether it's possible to close the hearing subject to having the Design Review Board review this, but we feel like this is a good faith response to the comments of the Design Review Board as well.
I agree, I concur. Do any of my other board members have any other comments or questions at this time? Paul?
No, I don't.
Artie?
Just curious, you had mentioned something about solar, so I was just curious.
Right, so, yeah, so then we wanted to speak to the solar question that had been raised. So, Mark, do you want to address that?
Would Eric get there? Very good, thank you. So I probably should have let off what could be done. I said it could not be done, so I apologize for that, but... So we did, we did look at it pretty hard as far as potential for solar on the roof. We sort of talked about it at the last hearing. But, you know, this building was designed in the 1950s, and then adding any solar is going to require major upgrades to the structure because of being, taking it up to current code, because we're going to be exceeding the 5%. So that's going to require structural steel reinforcement. The whole roof would have to come off, it'd have to put in new insulation, plus tapered insulation, new membrane. And then on top of that, because it is a truly flat roof, we'd have to add secondary roof drains. So I looked at that little hatched area. The blue hatched area is... That's a roof that we are now replacing the membrane on, so we're splitting the existing and just overlaying so we don't increase the load. That's 78,000 square feet of roof if we were to put solar on that. I ran the numbers for structural steel reinforcement, the insulation, the tapered insulation, the membrane. So all that adds up to 2.3, 2.6 million without any solar infrastructures. So that would be a huge issue, but we could, we did say, well, you know, we are building the fleet addition. It's 14,500 square feet, I did a quick layout of that. Got about 8,000 square foot available for solar. 337 panels roughly, 320 watts per panel, that's about 108 KW array possible.
Which one is the fleet one?
That's the green.
The green one?
The green box, yeah.
Because that's new construction.
Yeah, so...
So just curious, why these panels these days, even commercial, they're talking 380, 450 watt per panel? Where's the 320 coming from?
It was off of a public website for roughsizing. We didn't go out and get a quote.
Sure, okay.
So there may be better opportunities, but just kind of running it through. So, you know, ultimately, we prefer the installation, not the additional approval, but we certainly are willing to design the roof. We're at the right time now to actually design the roof to accommodate a future solar rate.
Just to be clear, design the roof of the area that's sort of...
Yes.
Light, green. So that it can sustain a solar installation.
That would be installed as part of the construction.
Well, we're not planning on doing that as part of the construction. We haven't gone... We'd have to go out and find somebody to build it and hopefully do a leaseback on it. But certainly, at a minimum, we can certainly design the roof to accommodate it.
Okay. Any other comments, Artie?
No, I mean, I can appreciate the fact of that cost to change any existing roof. Which is the irony aspect, is you're taking off all this heavy equipment, but these today's standards don't care that you take off the heavy equipment.
And when we did look at the facility initially in 2017, we had major discharges to all the structure. I would say at least mildly, not significantly, although...
I understand.
Now with everything else.
But thank, but thank you, I mean, solar would be great, it would be great if you do it, but thank you.
Natasha and Jean, Jean, I see your hand is up, but I'm going to come to Natasha first. Natasha, do you have any comments?
Yes, can you hear me?
Barely, but go ahead.
Hold on, let me see.
That's not you, it's the acoustics, it's the acoustics of the room, it's not you.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yep.
Okay. So, thank you so much for the presentation. I think it's great, the bioinfiltration basin is great, new trees on Kendrick and Third Avenue, and then the increased landscaping on Third Avenue is all, I think, a positive thing. I understand about the solar and I encourage, you know, the fleet roof to be at least solar-ready so in the future, if we want to add, which is, I think, what you're saying here in the last bullet point, right? Fleet roof to accommodate future solar. That's all great. So my question is in general, well, I have two questions. But the first one is the parking. So you increased the parking from 285 to 380, and I know it's below what is required, but... And from what I heard last time, the reason why... And that's the parking on the left-hand side, which is, right, the employee parking. What we heard last time was that it was for one to two times a year, so when you have really, really large meetings, you were looking for additional parking. Is that correct?
More like quarterly, but yeah, so we looked at... We have the employee count from Coca-Cola, we also have their shifts and differentials, and we went through and put together what the likely parking scenarios would be. And on the likely parking scenario with a quarterly meeting occurring, then we were coming in at about 380 spaces.
Right, but on a regular basis, how many spaces do you need?
It's more like 280.
Right, but that's what you had before, you had about 285, right?
Yeah, he's just grabbing a piece of paper.
Yeah, no, no, I have it from here. So I guess my... So my question is stormwater, right? So you're basically going back into the stormwater system. And the question that I have, and maybe if I could... It looks to me that from what you have today, there's more green space on B Street and on the, you know... What's this road, like the road beside the face is the highway. There's an urban connection to the TripAdvisor building with green space that you're basically making into an island in, let me... Into this area here, right? So, do you have a site plan that has where the bioswale is? Like a full site plan of the full site?
Yeah, there's...
Right here.
There's not a bioswale.
There's not a bioswale. There was a, sorry, that's, that's a bioretention basin. That was in the original design. And then there was a filter strip that we presented last hearing that's been converted to another bioretention basin.
And where is that located?
But you're correct. That, that's the South Island. Eric, if you go to the previous, not these slides, but the, the slides from the previous hearing shows the areas of the site that have been converted from.
You want me to open up the previous?
Impervious area to pervious area. In addition to, you know, as part of this project, there was a significant amount of building demolished.
Right.
And we've also reorganized the parking. So the result of those two things netted out approximately 30,000 square feet of new pervious area on site.
Right.
So, so we are maintaining the existing drainage patterns as part of this project.
Right.
And the result is that within all of the discharge points of the site, we've either maintained what was the amount of area that was going there and the amount of impervious area going in that direction, or made it significantly better.
Right. So I guess my, my question is, you're, you're adding a significant amount of more parking space, but that parking space is only used quarterly, right? And so I'm wondering if, and you're eliminating like a big swath of, of green space that is, can I share my, my screen for one quick second?
Sure.
With that?
Alex, are you able to enable this?
So what I'm looking here is urbanistically, that TripAdvisor has all of this green space here, and you had a significant amount of green space. And, and it looks like you're, you know, when you removed, you removed this part and you did an addition, right? And then you removed this area here as well. Is that correct?
Correct. And that Circle Drive came out.
Right. So what I'm looking at is that now you have little, tiny little islands. There's the bios, the bioretention here, bioinfiltration here, and then you have a little bit more here, and you have a little bit here, that, you know, that are more plants and, and the fence. And I think that's great. I'm just, my, my question is, if you're, if you have 280 spaces and you have 100 extra that is only used quarterly, and you're, and you're basically getting rid of more of a grassy field or grassy area here, is there a way of creating more permeable space or like pavers or something in this area that can be used to be more landscaped for the rest of the year and for that quarterly meeting could be used to park on in addition to the green space? Because I feel like this is the area that connects to this green space and, and we're losing it, and, and you're creating more, more area that's, that's, you know, more parking space area and not as much stormwater retainage. So in an effort of, of reducing the amount of water that's going into the stormwater system, is that, is there a possibility of this area here?
So a lot of that pavement does drain to the rain garden, the bioretention area. And within that rain garden, so the, the overland flow is directed to a permeable area where it's then recharged. So.
No, I understand, but in general.
Right, we're effectively doing that.
If you have a quarter of the parking lot that's going to be empty most of the time, and you're removing all of the green space that is a connection to the building next to it, is there a way of making this, you know, be permeable and usable?
I, I, I think it might, to, to respond to your comment, Natasha, I think it's, might be useful to look again, though, at the site plan that, of what we're proposing, because in that area from our, from one of our slides from the last time, I don't know if we can call that up. Eric, can you call up the slides from the last time?
From the last presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I think that parking, the 100 extra spaces is deceiving. There's shift work. There's crossover.
Right.
There's, so, so really, we, we wanted to have enough parking spaces where we weren't impacting the surrounding streets. It's not all, if we look at the parking number, I believe some of that extra parking was, was truck parking as well, so that we didn't have.
So, so the, yeah, the point I was trying to make, thank you for putting this slide up, Eric, is you see all that green area up there, that's new. That's, you know, right now, that shot, that aerial shot that you, that we were just looking at, Natasha, that showed this large, completely paved area. So there, there is new green area being proposed there in terms of, you know, both drainage and aesthetics.
Right, but the old new, the, the old area was, you know, in here, that's, I need to use a different color. The old area had this piece here, it had a space here, and it had space here. And so it's being converted into parking. And so I guess what I, what I'm asking is, could this area be done with pavers or something that's permeable so that it can be used as, you know, more of as a garden during the, during the year except for, and then, but you could still park on it when the quarterly meeting occurs?
So.
Just to kind of keep the continuity with the urban landscape.
The, the northern part of that parking lot drains to the rain garden where it's infiltrated. So, so it essentially does drain onto a depression.
It's not just a function, though, of drainage. That's a different issue. What she's, what she's talking about is an aesthetic issue, that where you have, you know, just concrete, is there a way to use a different material that would give the appearance, perhaps it could be, like I think, Natasha, you're talking about the Town Common, where you have a material or like we're talking about the perimeter, I think, of the Bullfench property, where there are these kind of pavers, but grass can grow through, you can mow it. And that would give the, you know, create a better aesthetic look and provide a creative and kind of green continuity and an aesthetic continuity from this property to the adjacent property. Because when you just, including the, the updated plan that you have here with the little bit of green that you have there, it's not as much as what you previously had.
So I think we're providing a 50-foot green strip along that portion of the site. Eric, is that dimension accurate? So what I heard was she was asking for porous pavers in the parking lot.
Well, I am, because then it creates a landscape.
But that, that north landscape strip, Eric, I don't know if you could pull that dimension, but I believe that's about 50 feet from the curb line to our new curb line. So we've provided a significant.
But it's not, you're not creating space, you're creating a buffer. You used to have space. You used to have green space. Now you don't have green space, and 100 of those aren't going to be used but quarterly. So is there an opportunity for you to create that as green space that can also be parked on for the times when you need it to remain the, to continue, as, as Adam was saying, the continuity of the urban landscape that we have already? And that makes a better, you know, space for the people that work in the building, as well as retain stormwater on site?
So maybe I can speak a little bit about how the parking lots are going to function with the employees. So the north lot there, which is replacing where the old building used to be, that is going to be, that's not a fenced lot, that's going to be open, and that is going to be primarily drivers and some office personnel will park in there. And then they'll also, that'll be where the visitors will park. So that area is going to get heavily parked.
On a regular basis.
On a regular basis. The directly, the line separates that from the other parking, there is a fence there, and that's where, that area is also going to be heavily parked all the way down to about the green space, and that's the warehouse workers. So that'll be, that gets filled like three quarters or so, and then it'll have a, an overlap, and then it'll, some folks will go. The, really, the overflow spaces are the ones around the green space. And if you follow down along Kendrick, those parking spaces down there, those probably aren't going to be used by anybody other than overflow parking on those quarterly meeting dates.
I see.
And where does the, right now, where do, based on your plan, where, where do the people that work in the building, where do they currently park?
So they currently park, there's some where that, up in the north where the green bioswale is, that, that area right there is a large, well, not a large, a medium parking lot, about the same size as that concrete. They, that's where the, most of the drive, truck drivers park in that area. The remainder park in the large pavement area adjacent to 128, behind the fence.
Yeah, and again, everything that's shown in green on this plan is, is now paved in the existing condition. So the 50-foot buffer that we're adding, that is currently, that is currently a paved parking lot.
So it sounds like, it sounds like, although I like Natasha where you're going, pragmatically, they're not really going to be able to mow that section if there, if there was a combination of materials, including a grass type of a thing, because it would be heavily parked. Do you have other comments, Natasha, or questions?
No, th- those are my only questions. I just, I think, I understand that 50-foot buffer, but right now it's in the center of the site, and now all of that is now parking lot. So I was just trying to find a way where it could still, could retain the same quality that you had before and, and, and still be able to be usable. So that, that's where I'm coming from, to, to make it not be a parking lot, you know?
I under, I understand that. Gene, Gene, your hand is up. Do you have other comments? You're muted.
Unmuted. A very quick one. Going back to the corner, and you don't even have to put up anything, the, the corner of Kendrick and B. Is the, is the chain link fence all along Kendrick and then along B there going to be replaced? And is it going to be replaced with the black vinyl chain link?
Let me take this one.
Yes.
Yeah, so along B Street, you'll get the ornamental fence, which you see in this picture here. And then it follows down along and where Eric has planted at the corner of B and Third Ave. It'll go around there, and then it'll turn down to a third, and then it'll transition to the black vinyl chain link fence. And that'll take you all the way around to the high point at Kendrick. And when we transition back, yeah, so keep going. And then all the way, keep going around the corner. And then right there, we get back to the, the, where the trucks would be parked. And that, that's where the fence is heavily damaged right now. So that's all going to get replaced. And that basically goes along, the grade goes up as you go up Kendrick, and then it'll turn in to the corner of the building.
With those vinyls.
It would be just a standard eight-foot chain link fence. They have no barbed wire.
Exactly where you just had it. Right there. Yep. To the right of that arrow is heading down toward the corner of B, is it going to be the ornamental wrought iron, you might call it, or is it going to be, be black vinyl?
That was just going to be standard eight-foot chain link fence without the black vinyl along Kendrick.
Standard, so you'll be replacing the existing chain link just because it's old, putting in new, new chain link?
Correct. It'd be a new chain link without the barbed wire on the top.
But it won't be black vinyl. Now, when you get back, when you go down right to the corner, where you're doing all the new plantings, I'm just not clear, I mean, I know you just tried to explain it, but I really was, I'm following you. Excuse me, I'm, I'm not at the meeting because I've got this cold. When you go down to the corner of Kendrick and B, is, where are you going to start using the more decorative fencing?
So, yeah, so that whole purple will be the black vinyl. And then we transition back to standard chain link fence, essentially after we come around Kendrick and get to roughly where the, the trucks are, start being parked again.
My problem is, I have people's faces there in that part of my screen instead of being able to see the purple.
Can you see the purple now, Gene?
Now I understand. The purple line is the new decorative fence. And all along Kendrick is going to be just a replacement of the chain link.
Correct.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify the.
Can't we have?
The, the purple line.
Can't we continue that purple line along Kendrick above halfway to the, to where you had that arrow before? Yep. Wouldn't it look nicer?
So that's black vinyl.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to have.
Yeah, I think it.
I'd like to know if the Design Review Board would, would, would want that. It seems to me it, it would look nicer. That is the most visible spot for the, for the property to the public.
Can, is it okay if I respond? Does anybody hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, I know you can hear me online. If I can respond, Eric, landscape architect, keeping in mind what the, the amount of plantings that we're going to be adding to that corner, you're really not going to be able to see the fence. Plus, it's going to be up higher, and you're going to have a lot of plants that are going to be right in front of it. So there's, you know, there's a good, you know, almost 100 plants along, you know, at this corner. So you're really not going to see much for fencing.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer. Thank you, Eric.
No, you're welcome.
And I suppose that the Design Review Board will consider that and we'll see what they say, but I won't press further for it. Thank you.
Okay. Unless there's any other comments. Oh, I see, Evan, do you have additional comment?
Well, there's something that we wanted to put up on this slide to sort of, we thought might be useful for considering Natasha's comments about the green space, you know, comparing what's there now to what we're proposing. Because I think Natasha's view is that we are taking away green space that's there now and replacing it with parking. And I think it might be useful to look at the comparison of what's there now to what we're proposing. Eric, do you have the ability to put up Slide 5 from the last presentation? That one. Okay. Somebody needs to move.
I'm talking about this area here, not the rest of the site.
Right, we know. So Chris, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, your comment was along B Street. So as you can see now, the existing employee lot goes right up to B Street. So what the previous graphic was showing was that 50-foot buffer is really removing pavement from along the B Street right away and providing landscape buffer all the way to the existing concrete parking lot.
As, as well as a sort of a right turn where the drainage.
Right there. So you, the, the next slide is the proposed condition.
Yeah, can you go to the next slide then, Eric? Not that one.
No, it should be Slide 6.
I don't know why, this, this one.
There. So everything that's in green on that slide is currently paved. So Natasha, you're correct that there are some green areas that are there presently that are going to be turned into parking lot, but there's also a fair amount of parking lot there presently that's being turned into green area.
Yeah, so this is a little confusing, but if you could go to the rendering, Eric, so she could.
Yeah, I completely, I know, I totally understand, but what I'm saying is that it's moved to the side, so it's not creating opportunities for space. It's just basically creating a parking lot with small little, you know, islands of.
No, but that, that whole, that whole area.
Versus having like a chunk of area that's, you know, that has like a lawn, let's say. I, I understand this is, this is the retention. And, but the current has plantings right here on the street, screening it, and then it has actual open space. So that, that was my, my concern is that you're, it's basically becoming a suburban parking lot versus an, you know, I mean, it wa, not that it wasn't a parking lot before, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but you went from, from large green spaces to smaller, and I know that you're doing, you know, this area here, but this area is high, which it, I mean, it's, that's why I said, it's, it's great, the other pieces that you're doing. I appreciate that. I'm just saying there's a loss here of continuous green space beyond the, the L shape here.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm mindful of the time because we have another hearing, and we have other items in our agenda, one of which will hopefully take a considerable amount of our, our time. So Gene and Natasha, if you're not satisfied, do you want to seek a motion to continue, or are you okay to close the hearing, subject to additional comment from the Design Review Board?
I am okay with closing the hearing subject to additional comment from the Design Review Board. board.
And I have a question. The comment of the design review board, will they take into account the comments that we've made today?
Lee, I'll let you answer that.
I think, I think the design review board is just going to look at their proposal and whether or not their proposal, I think, addresses the concerns that the design review board raised. I think the issue that Natasha, that you're raising is, it has not been raised as an issue with the design review board. So the design review board is going to be probably looking at the revised drawings and commenting on, in terms of whether or not they're responsive to the issues that they raised in their memo.
So can, Natasha, do you want to speak to Lee offline? And then, Lee, would you be able to relay some of Natasha's comments to the design review board for consideration?
If you, you want the, the design review board to assess whether or not their parking lot can be, what, utilized with pavers to create additional green space?
Or just more continuous green space. I mean, I would feel comfortable closing the hearing if at least we, we had meeting notes that said, you know, we, we'd like to encourage creating a more continuous green space or, or have something that could feel less like a parking lot at that corner. And then they can, they can vet it.
So gentlemen, we have two choices here. We can close the hearing and condition something or keep the hearing open and have you in another evening to consider another update for that one section of the lot in addition to receipt of satisfaction from the design review board.
Mr. Chair, I ask just one clarification from Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify, and that, this will help me. At the last, at the last meeting, and I think maybe it'll help Natasha perhaps as well, the last meeting, it sounded like there was going to be one parking lot, which is really only going to be used for that, those conference, a few conferences during the year. That's, that's what it sounded like in the last meeting. This, this time it sounds like, it sounds different. Is there any, Eric, any of those parking lots, just to confirm, I think I heard the answer, any of those parking lots primarily going to be used once or twice a year so we can be more creative what's happening with them?
So, yeah, what I mentioned, I think, earlier is that towards the, towards where the green, the bio swale is, that's really where the overflow parking will be. So when, you know, so for example, when you have the quarterly meetings, some of them are going to be guests that are not part of the, the day-to-day facility. I expect Dave's going to have his, his team parked down by the bio retention swale on the Kendrick.
We're talking the southwest corner.
Southwest corner. And then the guests can park in the, in the main parking lot up front.
Which otherwise would be used on a more frequent, regular basis.
I expect that lot is going to be full and, and again, all the way down almost to the bio retention is going to be anywhere from 50 to 75, 80 percent depending on shift change every day.
And let me ask you this. Could you, recognizing that you need that convenience of parking to access that main door, particularly, you know, whenever you, to access that main door, have you, have you reached the absolute extent of potential green area in that space? Is it possible to add additional green elements to that area?
That particular space?
Let me say, if the answer is yes, we'll be able to review this a little faster.
I know my answer is, but Chris, you're the, you're the sibling here, so on this one.
I, I think we'd have to talk about it with Coke. I mean, I, I just found in my notes, we are improving that to provide, it looks like 51 and a half feet of proposed green space in, along that B Street corridor.
But just south of B Street, so I understand what you're saying.
Right.
And yet, and yet what we saw from the graphic that Natasha had submitted is south of B Street. So you would, so you would, B Street, there's the building and there's parking there. And then below that parking section, just a tiny bit south of that parking section, there was the main entrance that had a substantial amount by appearance of that, of that green space. So, and what you're saying is we're removing that section of the green space to a parking lot, yet we're adding additional green space elsewhere. I don't know if the subtotal is the same.
I think we're relocating the green space in that spot and providing more.
Okay, so the net, so the net, what they're saying Natasha is that the net impact is in fact greater green space than what's presently there.
And not continuous, right.
But it's shaped differently and designed differently.
So if you took the square footage of this green space shown there?
North of the existing cross building?
No, just what's shown in the exist, in the area of the cross building and then this little odd shaped area. How does the square footage of that compare to what we're proposing in this area?
For me, it's not the issues for footage. I know you're increasing it by 3,000 square feet. For me, it's, the issue is more of the fact that this is like a front entry to, to the front of the building here. And it's, it's basically you have some visitor parking, but all the parking is behind. And since this is removed, a lot of this is removed, and so this will just be a big parking lot. So the building will have no front with kind of a, a green space that then continues over to the other side of the street. See, there's a, there's a kind of this urban edge. Now you just have it here and then you have a couple of islands.
So can you share your screen?
Yeah.
I mean, if there's a full presentation, that's unfortunate, but we are, I'm very mindful of our time. We're going to have to move, we have to move on. So I'm prepared, so we've got two options. Take a motion to continue or take a motion to close subject to satisfaction of the design review board. However, Natasha has these lingering questions. So Natasha, do you want to, what, this is your issue. Why don't you make a motion?
I mean, I, I make a motion to close the hearing based on contention on Lee or us writing a letter to the design review board saying, you know, this is something that we're going to be losing, kind of this front yard and, and, and an edge to, to the street, to, to a full parking lot. And so for the design review to, to look at it holistically and determine what is the best way to move forward.
So Lee, are we able to accommodate that and then we'll take a second to the motion?
I think it's, I think it's cleaner. I think you communicated what the issue is to the developer. I think it's cleaner to have the developer look to revise the plan and present something to the, to the design review board that they can review and have it come back to the planning board to close it out.
Yeah, but.
I think it's, I think it's an open issue. I, I don't think we have a design here. I don't think we have a solution. And so I think, I think Natasha's communicated her concern. She's asked that it be reexamined. I think they need to reexamine it and to come back to the planning board with an alternative that's maybe been vetted by the design review board in the interim, along with the other issues that they've addressed with the design review board.
And I think the applicant's response to that is, we, we do not want to redesign the parking lot again. We've designed the parking lot to accommodate the, the balance between having more green space, which we have, a lot more green space on the site as a whole, and the unnecessary flow of the parking, the parking that's up in that area. We're not putting extra paving there just for the purpose of having a bigger parking lot. We're putting, we're, we're, we have more spaces on site than will typically be used on a day-to-day basis, that is true. But the areas that are going to be most heavily used on a regular basis are these two parking areas up near the corner of B Street and 128. So it's, you know, our feeling is, you know, saying redesign the parking, redesign it, it would be, require a redesign of flow and sort of the concept of where people who are using the building on a daily basis are going to park. You know, you, are you going to push them down to the bio retention basin so that we can have more green space up near B Street? I don't think that's a reasonable ask.
I don't think you have to, you have to move, but you could put all of the islands together to create a, to one space rather than have little dots throughout.
So I, I just looked at the stormwater report. It looks like we have about 13,000 square feet of additional green space north of the cross building. So we're adding about 13,000 square feet of green space along that street edge.
I don't understand. Can you explain that again?
So do you, can you kind of, can you get that, whatever you're looking at, up on our screen? Otherwise, I'm going to take a motion to continue the hearing in a minute. I've got 60 seconds here, I'm sorry, but we're quickly losing our time.
Well, I, I think this plan shows it, that the green space that is north of the existing cross building, based on the stormwater report, we're adding about 13,000 square feet along that street edge. So, you know, we are adding impervious area, or pervious area.
I, I, and I guess what the applicant is saying, what I am saying on behalf of the applicant is, we do not want to continue the per, the hearing for the stated purpose of going back and redesigning the parking area.
I, I understand what you're saying. So Natasha, if you're still unsatisfied, do you want to take a motion to continue the hearing? And we'll call them in and have another discussion about this or otherwise?
Yeah, I like, I like Lee's proposal that they go to design review and then come back, come back to us.
I think we need to continue the hearing, Mr. Chair, because I think that.
The challenge though, the challenge though is.
The challenge is concerns, if we close the hearing, then we're leaving it up to the design review board without further input from us because we will have to close the hearing.
Correct.
And I think if, if, if we're going to have continued input on the subject, we need to continue the hearing. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue the hearing to, Lee, please give me the date and time.
It would have to be December the 5th. Adam, do you want to do it first at 7 o'clock? We don't have anything noticed for that time.
Before, before you vote on this, could I, I want to make a clarification from Natasha. Natasha, are you, to some degree, are you primarily saying that your, your desires to have that additional green space strewn throughout the parking spot moved, moved to the main green buffer to make it more continuous? Is that, is that what you're, to some degree, what you're primarily saying?
I think what I'm primarily saying is that you had a front lawn and you had a front to the building that, that is against the street that faces the other building and now that's all becoming a parking lot. Is there a way that there could be, and you have all these little tiny islands dividing up all the parking, could that, could we still create a buffer that is still, you know, a buffer closer to the street that creates kind of an entrance to the building that's not just all parking? There's two issues. One is the stormwater, which, which I know that they've done the bio infiltration basin and all of that. This, you know, so that's why I was thinking if that area could be, I understand that, that most people are going to be parking there, but could it, could there be more of a buffer since you, you had kind of a front lawn and now that's all being taken away and just making parking?
It's not, it's, but they're saying it's not all front lawn. There is some front lawn, but there's also, there's also a building and there's pavement and parking and a driveway.
I understand, Adam, I'm just saying, right now, you're going from a front of a building to a parking lot. And so I, what I'd like to see is that, 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 the, the, the street edge and the view that I just showed is, is more sensitive than just creating a parking lot.
So I'm not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I just ask a question that might help here? I see along B Street at the front, at the corner there, I see the 50-foot buffer, but I don't understand why the 50-foot buffer can't extend a little farther west. There are two driveways, correct? There's one right at the corner.
So, so Gene.
And then there's one with the purple line changes to the green line.
Gene.
Why can't?
Gene, can you hear me?
That green go a little farther and would that satisfy the concern for the appearance of the front of the property?
Gene.
That seems easy.
Gene, Gene, hold on a second. Evans is trying to answer that. Are you able to hear him?
All right, I'll stop talking now, probably hear him. Thank you.
So if you look at the drawing that's up on the screen right now, you see that there's sort of a rectangle, a long rectangle that's partially green and partially white. The white area is currently green. So what this slide is intended to show is the green that we are adding that is not currently green. The, the buffer area would extend all the way along B Street to the driveway entrance, including the area that's currently shown on white. The reason it's shown on white now is because paradoxically, it's already green.
Okay, so I, I didn't see that. I saw that you were taking away a lot, so all of this is green?
Yes. Eric, could you go to the rendering, please?
Yeah.
It's going to stay green.
And also, I, I, you know, the, the layout.
This is just what we were converting.
Presentation material here is frankly a problem because it doesn't, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the existing and it's caused this challenge.
We just lost a half hour.
Yeah, exactly.
So does that address the frontage issue or what it looks like from B Street right across from the other building?
Is it okay if I say something in response to Natasha, if anybody can hear me?
So Natasha, are you satisfied with this?
Yes, I, this is much better. I thought that everything was being deleted.
I understand, I understand. So then, should we, can we now take a motion to close the hearing subject to additional comment from satisfaction from the design review board?
I still want.
So I have a motion by Paul and a second by Arti. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Arti Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have closed the hearing. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, I'll give you guys a second to clear up, is an amendment to major project site plan permit number 99-2 from the applicant, Boston Properties, for a property located at 140 Kendrick Street for the purposes of adding a solar canopy above the, the garage. And as we have a change of shift here, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Arti. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Arti Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Gene, you're muted, but, Gene McKnight?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what we're voting on.
Waiving, waiving the reading of the notice of hearing.
Oh, of course, yes, yes.
The chair votes aye. We have waived the reading of the notice of hearing. And with us, although, yes, with us this evening, we have from Boston Properties, who would like to start and introduce for, okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, can you introduce the?
So I'm asking them to, I'm asking them to do that now.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm happy to introduce who we are.
Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick DeAngelo, so I'm a senior vice president and councilor at Boston Properties. And with me this evening are, to my immediate right is Elise Lundey, who is the construction manager for our 140 Kendrick Street project. To her right is Nick Scolli, a civil engineer from VHB. To my left is Marcel Rogers, who is the development director at Sunwell, our solar partner. And he's a chief designer for the solar roof project. And to his left is Nitu Siddarth, and she is the sustainability manager for Boston Properties throughout the country. And to her left is John Abbe, and he is a principal of Sunwell, again, our solar roof partner. We have been here on a couple of other occasions. I assume you'd like me to start with our presentation?
Yes, please, thank you.
Why are we here this evening? We have filed an application with both the planning board and the design review board. board and the design review board for an amendment to the existing special permit, which was originally granted for the construction and operation of the 140 Kendrick Street building in 1999. We seek permission to place a solar roof canopy above the existing roof at the, at one, the 140 Kendrick Street garage. And in addition, the existing special permit requires us to maintain at all times 1,343 parking spaces. We need to take three of those spaces that are adjacent to the existing garage and use those for solar battery equipment and appurtenances. We are able to restripe the compact space area so that we do not lose any spaces. And we do not have to add any, any pavement to do that. So we do have a slide deck, and our first speaker beyond me is our sustainability director, Nitu Siddath. Nitu?
Thank you, Rick. Before we dive into the project details, I'd like to give a little bit of a background on the BXP's climate action leadership. BXP is a leader in climate action. We have committed to and keep track--
Could you move the microphone just a little closer to yourself? Thank you. Just a little bit.
BXP is a leader in climate action, and we have committed to and keep track of our key performance indicators to measure our environmental performance over time. Since 2008, we've reduced our energy use intensity by 40% and our carbon emissions intensity by over 70%. We have a science-based target to reduce our emissions intensity by 39 by 2024. We also have a carbon neutral operations goal to be achieved by 2025, and over 50% of our portfolio is LEED certified, of which 98% is certified at the highest LEED or platinum level. But of this leadership in climate action has been onsite solar development. Till date, we've completed 13 onsite solar development projects totaling a total of eight megawatts, and we have additional five megawatts in the pipeline. Of those 13 projects, we have eight located here in the Boston and metro, and the larger Boston suburban region. And in amongst the five megawatt in pipeline, we actually have two additional garage developments. We have partnered with Sunwell in the past on several of our onsite solar projects. Among those are two garage development projects, one at 1,000 Winter Street and the other at 1020 City Point. And before I hand this over to Marcel at Sunwell, who would be presenting the project details, I did want to take a minute and explain, or take a moment and say why this onsite solar development is so important for this project. Climate action has never been needed more urgently than before, and existing buildings represent almost 30% of the total greenhouse gas emissions. Decarbonization of existing buildings remains a challenge. What we are seeking to achieve at this development, our renovation project, is overcoming that challenge. As you can see here, BXP, along with a client and future tenant, Wellington Management, has reimagined existing building renovations. As part of this project, we are reinstating air and air sealing the entire building envelope. We are electrifying the HVAC system, essentially decommissioning the gas-wired HVAC systems onsite. And with the AHU replacement, we are bringing in innovative technology with superblock heat recovery. We are updating lighting and equipment controls. And finally, we are adding onsite solar, which would generate more energy that the building would consume. And as Ben Myers, what's president of sustainability at BXP, has put this mantra for this building, is build tight, ventilate light, right, and energize with sunlight. In an existing building, in a relatively dense environment, it's unprecedented to do this. So we want this project to be a living building or a living lab for others within Mass and in the country to see how we can renovate and implement a conversion of an existing building into a net-zero building and continue that leadership of climate action. We look forward to continuing this work with the town of Needham to advance climate action together with proven time test results, like the one at 140 Garage, solar installation. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Marcel to dive into project details.
Thank you, Nitu. I'm Marcel Rogers, director of development at Sunwell, and we're honored to be brought in as the partners here to help figure out how we can energize with sunlight. Before diving into the, the plans and kind of our information here, I just want to orient the group here a little bit. Sorry, a little lag. This is I-95 here to the west of the property. Kendrick Street runs, apologize for the lag here, along the front this way eastward. This is the top of the hill at Kendrick Street, kind of overgoing the I-95 overpass, continuing onwards. And I'll just point out, sorry, again, apologize for the lag on the mouse here, but I'll point out in a later slide then, the area to which we're putting the energy storage, as that is located on an elevation lower than Kendrick Street Hill and kind of right next to that retainer, retainer wall. These renderings here provide an overview of what the canopy is to, to look like. It is a, what we call long span canopy, meaning that it starts sloping on one end of an area and continues onwards to a higher point. The slope currently is two degrees, starting about an eight-foot minimum clearance height on the low end, and that's the side next to I-95, and continuing onwards to a total height about 20 feet, four inches above the top deck surface. Couple elements of the design here, you'll notice that the corners, as has been commented on by the design review board, on two of the sides in the I-95 are kind of cut out there. That is due to the structural integrity of the garage itself. As part of the initial feasibility study, we provided, conducted a 3D scan just to get a sense of what the concrete structure was and what it could support for the canopy. And so the intention here was to maximize the solar production capabilities and obviously-- and be compliant with all kind of the, the structural feasibility of the structure itself. The total size of the array is about 1.2 megawatts, and it's anticipated to generate about 1,300 megawatt hours. Just to put those numbers in context, it's about enough energy to power 130 to 140 homes.
I, I heard some comment about this, with all the solar in the building. Was there some additional solar plus a garage would generate more than the building was going to use itself? Is that what I heard?
Yes, there is a little bit of solar on the rooftop on Building A.
But the combined solar will generate more than the building's going to--
Yes.
These diagrams show the major components of the canopy structure itself. The columns are all placed on top of the existing concrete piers. Thereafter, there are girders and beams that form the main structure of the canopy itself. And the rails are kind of like the strapping, if you're kind of comparing it to a building envelope, where they're used to support the solar panels that are mounted on top. Here are the three connection types, showing the base plates on top of the concrete piers themselves, and a rendering to show what the canopy, the area underneath the canopy would look like. A few section details, I'll, again, just call out, and it's quite difficult to see on this PowerPoint here, but I'll just call out a couple of heights. Again, the minimum clearance height on that low end of the canopy, right next to I-95, is eight feet. And then it slopes two degrees towards the east to a total height of 20 foot, four inches above the top deck. The energy storage was required as part of, in order to be compliant with the Massachusetts State Solar Program. And so as part of this project here, we're proposing a 336 kilowatt or 672 kilowatt hour energy storage system. Again, to put that number in context, that's the equivalent of about seven to 12 Tesla cars, and that is all being concentrated into one parking space. So that area highlighted in blue there shows the total area required there's three parking spaces that we had mentioned earlier, that would be required for the energy storage equipment, as well as the inverter and other supporting electrical equipment. Again, that's at the elevation lower, next to the, the ever sources transformer, which is that green box located next to the snowplow. And the electrical room is also kind of right there. So really trying to concentrate that electrical equipment for the solar project, put it next to ever sources existing equipment and in the area below or kind of tucked away there by the retaining wall. A few renderings of the campus itself and how that's anticipated to look with a solar project. You can see in the first rendering that that is what the proposed layout of the electrical equipment would be. And then the two subsequent renderings showing additional views of the campus, one from the green traffic circle in the middle of the campus, and then one from later addition via roof deck. Also sharing here a few street views, starting with I-95 off ramp, that's going, the I-95 north off ramp, moving downwards over the high point of Kendrick Street Hill, and then moving down the hill a bit more to get a view of Kendrick Street onto the parking garage. And then finally, here's the lighting plan to share. Meeting a minimum requirement of one foot candle per area that's being covered on the top deck, we have specs LED lights that are anticipated to have a lifetime of 27 years to match the overall lifetime of the project. They are not being hung on pendants or anything like that. They're mounted flush against the rails in the, the canopy itself, again, to minimize overall aesthetic impacts and still maintaining minimum foot candles required for safety. And with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thanks. Again, Nick Scolli at VHB, the civil engineer for this project. So this just shows the, the parking plan. You can see just to the right of the garage on this plan is the, the three spaces that Marcel had discussed, where the, the equipment's going. If you actually move to the, to the bottom right of this plan, sort of, we have a, a call out there of the, the spaces that we are, that we are restriping. So we're taking the standard spaces, restriping them as compact to pick up those, the three spaces that we lost with the equipment. This maintains the existing parking spaces on account and keeps us just below the 50% compact requirement for the site. You go to the next one, Marcel? And then, just to talk about stormwater, all the stormwater from the, from the existing garage pitches to the, to the west, it gets picked up an existing concrete drain line and then eventually discharges to the pond through an oil-water separator. So all the downspouts from the garage solar, there's, there's eight downspouts that we are going to connect into that same pipe. Since that pipe is concrete, we, we're proposing to replace that with HDPE, just to make those, able to make those connections. Originally, we had planned to just maintain that since there's no increase in impervious area. Through the discussions with the DRB and Tom Ryder and Dave Roach, they had requested in, in a letter to, to look at infiltration. So in addition to sort of replacing that 310 feet of pipe, we're going to do that as perforated with some crushed stone around it. And then in the manhole in the parking lot, we're going to add a weir that basically, in all the smaller storms, it'll trap the water and that pipe will infiltrate the water over time. In the larger storms, it'll flow over the weir and go out the existing drainage system. So, so no change to that. That gets us, you know, based on our current proposal here, which I, I did send to, to Dave and Tom, it's a half inch over the impervious area of, of the new roof or the, the new solar. The benefit with the solar, too, is it picks up all of the water before it reaches the, the garage surface, so the driving surface. So it, you know, in the existing condition, the, if it's salted, the grit, the sands, all that stuff sort of washes off with, with the, the stormwater. When it's picked up on the solar, it doesn't have any of that. So it's, it's actually cleaner runoff with this proposed condition because it doesn't hit that, the grit and sort of the muck from, from any of the cars. So it will actually be infiltrating water that isn't infiltrating under the existing condition, and it'll be, it'll be cleaner water with this proposal.
Plus, it sounds like there'll be almost no need for any type of salt or treatment in, in the upper floor anywhere.
Correct. Yeah, it'll, it'll all be covered.
Is that your presentation?
That's our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
We, I'm mindful of our time. I appreciate the presentation. I will say, on behalf of the board, speaking for my colleagues, that we commend Boston Properties for taking seriously the climate action, your slogan, build tight. Can I remember it all?
Ventilate.
Build tight, ventilate right, and energize with sunlight, you know, is a laudable goal that we, you know, would love to see throughout on many of our buildings, both existing, which is even more difficult to do in addition to new construction. I, before I come to the board, is there anyone in the audience that has something that they would like to say, given that this is a public hearing? Are there any hands up? I don't see. Alex, thank you. Do you have anyone online on Zoom that has their hands up or hands raised? So while you're looking then, okay. So before I come to comment from our board, other comment from our board members, just to read into the record, we've received by email from our fire chief on October 26, no issues, from our police chief by email dated October 26, no issues, from our assistant public health director by email dated October 26, no, no comment. We did have two comments, one from our building commissioner and one from the town engineer. The summary from the town engineer is, in accordance with the town of Needham stormwater bylaw, the proposed new structure requires a minimum combined volumetric capacity of one inch over the impervious area to be recharged. The plans should be revised prior to receiving a building permit, showing the calculations that the infiltration system is sized to contain a minimum one inch of the total impervious area of, of the site for infiltration. So have you already revised the plan?
Yeah, so I actually, we've, we've had a couple of conversations with Dave, who was in conversation with Tom. The bylaw mentions a 25% increase or 25% addition to the building's square footage, where this is an addition. Dave and I kind of went back and forth.
That's not, that's, that's a separate question. So, so on that point, Dave Roach says that, that-- That's not, that's a separate question. So on that point, Dave Roach says that because it requires a building for the new construction, and the new construction or addition is greater than 25% of the building footprint, that bylaw does not exempt solar installations and structures. Therefore, I believe that the project shall comply. It is unclear, this is where I'm going now though, it is unclear from the plan if all of the roof water is being recharged as per the bylaw, and I believe that the town engineer will also be commenting on this issue. That's the issue that I'm presently addressing and wondering whether since October 27th, has that been?
Do you have the second paragraph from the letter that got dated today?
Oh, no, I don't. That came in, I guess, after, okay.
Okay, so that's been in from Dave Roach today.
I had a discussion with Dave this morning, said he was going to follow up.
So the addition is, and thank you for clarifying that, the applicant has responded to the question, stormwater recharge for the proposed roof canopy. Building and engineering departments have reviewed the recharge plan submitted and agree that the plan will comply with the intent of the bylaw. Future zoning changes that require, that's unrelated. So thank you very much for mentioning. That's from a letter dated November 1st from our building commissioner. So I think that satisfies it. So I don't see any comments, Alex, online, any hands up? So Paul, do you have any comment?
I have no comment.
Artie, do you have any comment?
I just got the question, thank Mr. Chair. No, we're not going to fly through it. One is question on the solar panels. I always look to the future. So my name's Artie Crocker. I'm actually solar engineer in the industry for NSE Solar. So one question, I'm always concerned about the quality of the panels, but at the same time, I understand the cost basis of what you're doing. So I see, I believe, you're using the Hanwha panels, but they have a temperature coefficient of roughly 0.35, 0.34, give or take, a D grade of at least 0.5. Now, I mean, there are, I mean, there are other panels out there in the industry which, I mean, may be in a similar cost basis with a much better temperature coefficient and D grade rate. Meyer Burger is one of them. So I'm not certain, I mean, has that even been a contemplation as far as this? Or is it, where are you at with that right now?
Yeah, certainly. So our kind of standard that we try to achieve is that the Bloomberg Tier One modules and those ones of having been kind of vetted as maybe bankable as kind of our industry standard that we go off of for investing in a solar project, understood on the temperature coefficients for the Hanwha modules in particular, and for others and potentially on that list as well. The Hanwha modules that we have specs are the modules that were available during that time period when we were designing the system. And from the, between then and now, we will be using a Tier One module, either equivalent to that Hanwha module or what is most available for this and relevant to this project.
And so it'll be, so I mean, I appreciate the cost, actually. I totally appreciate that, which means it may just still be the 0.34, 0.35 T, you know, temperature coefficient, 0.5 D grade rate.
Correct.
Okay. And the other question is, as far as the batteries, what's the chemistry in these particular batteries? Are they just testable power walls or what are they?
No, they're lithium ferrophosphate.
So they're lithium, nitric phosphate?
Ferrophosphate.
Oh, ferrophosphate, okay. Okay. And is, and to be compliant with the, you know, the regulations, at this point, are they being designed for time of use? How are they being used in the system itself?
Yes, it's actually connected. It's a DC coupled system. And so we will, all of the energy that's generated from the solar project will go first to the battery and then to the inverter on site and then exported to the grid. It's a standalou meter system.
So is, I mean, is it just, is it just a pass through or is it being used for time of use in the afternoon, second half, the afternoon? Is it being used for just connected solutions? Or is it, how's it being used, the battery?
Yeah, so it does qualify for connected solutions, but it is being used for kind of like the time of use benefit that you're referencing.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I know your company, great company. I mean, I admire your policies and I grant, as the chair said, I greatly admire your building, your company and what you're, what you look at to achieve in the environment.
Thank you very much.
How's that?
Natasha, do you have any comments?
No, I think it's a great project. I'm hoping it can be a prototype for other projects in town. So thank you so much for pushing the envelope on sustainability. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Natasha. Gene, do you have any comments or questions?
Only to make sure that we mention, it came in only today, this afternoon, notes from the design review board of two of its meetings on October 3rd, at which the questions were posed to the applicant, and then on October 17th, where the questions were answered. And although the design review board doesn't expressly say that they're satisfied with everything, it's kind of implied from their notes here that the questions that they had were satisfactorily addressed. So I don't know, Lee, if you agree that it's okay to just introduce that now, or it wasn't in our packets, or do we have to leave the hearing open?
Oh, no, it's, Alex added it to the revised packet that was put online, and so you just acknowledged it. And so it's part of the record. I think Adam was going to go through and acknowledge all the correspondence that we had received to make it formally part of the record. But certainly the memo from the design review board dated October 3rd, 2022, and then I guess the supplemental one dated October 17th, 2022.
So by those references, Gene, they're now incorporated into the record, and I think we're good.
That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. I don't see any comments or hands up, I should say, from anyone on Zoom. Alex, do you see anyone else?
One more thing.
Yes, Gene?
I happened to be walking around the building, because I was walking around Cutler Lake, and I observed that the last time we granted a permit, one of the conditions was that the applicant cooperate with the Division of Conservation and Recreation to improve the path all along the perimeter of the property. And a beautiful job was done. I just want to say, good job.
Thank you very much. Now, I do, Lee, do we have everything that we need to close the hearing?
Yes, I believe that you recognized the letter from the engineering department dated November 27th. Okay, and the police comments?
Yes, that's been done.
Okay, then I think we're good.
All right. Can I have a motion to close the hearing, please?
So moved.
I have a motion by Artie to close the hearing, second by Paul Alpert. Any discussion? Hearing none. I come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The hearing is closed. Thank you all very much. Congratulations on an excellent proposal. We look forward to the final product and hold it as exemplary.
And an excellent presentation, by the way. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Sorry, sorry, I've got multiple people talking at once. Lee, hold on one second. Artie, what were you saying? Okay, you, go ahead, go ahead. Lee, what was your comment?
My comment was that I can now prepare a decision for the board to consider at their next meeting. Of course, it will be, I think, basically an affirmative decision, enabling the project to go forward as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, folks, thank you very kindly.
What would your next meeting be? Would you take this up?
Our next meeting, we would have a decision.
It should be in two weeks.
Hope, one second.
Yes, two weeks. Two weeks is the schedule on this.
We have that. We do have a decision scheduled on our plan for November 15th.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that Artie has asked for a three-minute recess break, and then we'll come back. So it is on my watch, 8:42. We will reconvene at 8:43. We are recessed. Thank you very much. All right. We are back from recess. Thank you for your patience and indulgence. Before us now is an A&R plan from Needham Enterprises with respect to lot 251 on Lawton Road, a budding 93 South Street. From my understanding and recollection of the plan, the original lot is a little over 22,000 square feet in an SRB district, single residence B district, that is being proposed to be split into two lots, each over 11,000 square feet. Lee, if I'm not mistaken, the minimum lot requirement is 10,000 square feet per lot. Is that correct, Lee?
That's correct. At 150 feet of frontage, or 80 feet of frontage.
I don't, and 80 feet of frontage, which each of these lots have, even though one is a corner lot. Correct?
Yes, each of these lots meets the frontage requirement and the minimum lot size requirement.
I have no, I have no comment on this. Paul, do you have any comment?
I have no comment.
Artie, do you have any comment?
No comment.
Natasha, do you have any comment? Natasha, can you hear us and can you see us?
I couldn't unmute myself, sorry, for some weird reason. No, I don't have any comment. Thank you.
Very good. Gene, do you have any comment or question?
No comment, no question.
So.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the A&R plan.
We have a motion by Paul to approve the A&R plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Artie.
You said you had a comment about, you said you had a comment about the A&R plan. Never mind. Okay, I thought you said you had a comment. That's all. That's all. Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Just making sure.
I appreciate the double check.
Okay.
So we have a motion, a second by Artie Crocker. Any discussion? Hearing none. Coming to the vote, Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Gene McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We have approved the A&R plan. Thank you very much. Now, before us is our deliberation on, we begin tonight now our deliberation on major project site plan, special permit number 2022-02 by applicant Bullfinch to develop the property located at 557 Highland Avenue. To start us off, I intend to focus our process on the relief requested by the applicant as outlined in their attorney's letters most recently of August 15th. And I'm mindful of, and I wish to remind our board, that we be guided by three focusing questions as we deliberate. The first is, is the project, is the proposed project consistent with the special permit criteria contained in our zoning bylaw? The second question is, is the proposed project consistent with the dimensional regulations contained in our bylaw? And the third question is, does the project present impacts that can be addressed through conditions, or are there impacts so substantial that they cannot be reasonably addressed through conditions? Having reviewed the application materials, the town department comments and comments from town residents, the evidence and testimony before us in answer to those focusing questions, I find that the proposed project is compliant with the special permit criteria set forth in our zoning bylaw, two, that the proposed project is compliant with the dimensional requirements of our zoning bylaw, and three, that the impacts of the proposed project can be reasonably mitigated through conditions. I'd like to apply these focusing questions to the requested relief, which as an organizing principle, has effectively seven substantive relief items. The first, and this is the order, I guess, in which we'll take them, but I'll just enumerate the list. The first is a special permit for a floor area ratio of 1.21, whereas our zoning bylaw had a floor area ratio by special permit at a maximum of 1.35. Two, a special permit for height, and with respect to the north building, a height of 70 feet and five stories, and with this, the south building, a height of 42 feet and three stories. A third special permit request is for restaurant use to be determined at a subsequent time if they're able to tenant it up accordingly. And similarly, a special permit for retail use by a single tenant above 5,750 square feet, in the event that they are able to tenant up the retail plaza in that regard. A fifth special permit for a parking garage height to 55 feet. Six, a parking waiver, a special permit for parking waiver of 288 parking spaces. And then there is a site plan, special review and approval, and then a deviation from a design of a retaining wall and any other additional special permits that may be required, but I don't see any at this time. So at this point, to go through, let us talk about the floor area ratio. Does anybody have any comment about the floor area ratio? Paul?
No. I appreciate the applicant's willingness over the, over time, from the time we got started, to bring the floor area ratio down to 1.21. We do have, we did pass, the town meeting passed a zoning bylaw that allows up to 1.35. And so it is pretty much halfway between the 0.7 that's allowed by right and the 1.35 that could be allowed. A lot of, there was a lot of commentary about the floor space that's being added by the parking garage. This is something that this board has been dealing with for many years over a lot of the districts in town. It used to be the rule that, that the floor area of parking garages were included in floor area ratio. We have been moving away from that rule. In some districts in town, we amended our zoning bylaw to provide that the parking garages are not included. And in this particular zone, which is pre-recently passed, we provide that, that the garage space is not included. That, that is the, all of a sudden, the words escaping me, but, but that is the consensus of this board, that that is how we want it. We don't want all that parking space to take away from the retail space, the commercial space. I do want to add that we, we did continue, I'm sorry, we closed the hearing with a condition about hearing from the Board of Health about the bio lab two.
Yes, which we have, which we have received.
Which we have received. I am satisfied that the Board of Health is on top of monitoring the bio lab spaces. They presented to us, I think it was three or four, that have been in town over the past.
That's right. Since 2006.
Right, okay, so it's been almost 20 years. We're down to one presently, which is still being licensed properly, still being monitored properly by the federal government, the state government, and our local.
That's correct.
Board of Health. And the other three that had been in town, according to what we have received from, from our Board of Health, were so monitored while they were here. So I'm satisfied with the use. I'm satisfied, I'm satisfied with this project. And I think we've come a long way from the original plan to a And I think we've come a long way from the original plan to accommodate the bulk of the neighborhood concerns, the bulk of, it's not just the neighborhood, the bulk of the citizens' concerns. I know a lot of citizens still think the building is too big, but I'm satisfied.
Thank you. That's correct. We, we have received correspondence responsive to our request from the Department of Health, thank you for bringing that up, that there is an existing, there is an existing lab in town that is a BSL2 lab. I believe the hospital is also a BSL2 lab. Hospitals, I understand, are, are monitored under a separate regime at the state, and are, and have other regulations, but having said that, that's true, that this, that our Department of Health inspects the facilities, and in addition, there is a, there is a proactive requirement on every bio lab facility to renew every year its registration, which does trigger an annual inspection. I'll have a little more to say on that as we get closer, but with respect to the FAR, I understand you have no further comment? I have no comment. Artie, do you have a comment?
Yes, a couple of things. No offense taken, but technically halfway between 0.7 and 1.35 is 1.025. And this, and this is 1.21, which is 18% greater than 1.025. And how they came down to 1.21 from 1.25 was, they shaved a little bit of, what, the glass atrium, if I could read, if I, if I can refer to it there, they shaved some of the glass, that eight glass atrium area from the 120 exit ramp side, they just pushed, they just shaved a little, a little bit of that off. And then they just took a couple of notches off part of the building, and that brought it down from 1.25 to 1.21. So technically, they, you know, did technically, they reduce the size? Yes, but from a practical standpoint, did they reduce it? No, not really. So again, so this isn't anywhere near halfway between the minimum and the maximum. And again, the, the maximum was intended for, I think, there's a little more specific purposes or possibilities, and I don't think this fits, meets that criteria.
What, what specific criteria?
That being said, to some degree, to some degree, one of the biggest problems I have, I suppose, is that our setback from the road was never intended to have a, from the main road, was never intended to have another road in between that. And that's what the road is around, that's what the road around the building is, another road. The setback with 50 feet was never, it was intended to be a buffer, a green space, it was never intended to be what's going on with this presentation. This presentation, to some degree, you know, even though I applaud the applicant for what they're looking at as far as the LEED standard and the sole around the roof and so forth, this is quite the opposite. Actually, even if we look at the Coca-Cola presentation, as far as what they're doing around the, around the green space, the, the plantings around the perimeter and so forth, it's, it, this is almost, this is somewhat, not the opposite, but heading towards the opposite.
But I just wanted, I just wanted to stick to the FAR for now, though.
No, let me continue.
We can't, but focus on the FAR?
I, okay, the FAR is, the FAR, again, this is, this is much larger than what I believe should be, should be allowed in this space, and I do not believe reducing it will have any real, real impact on what's happening with the tax ability for the town itself. I'm not saying it's going to be directly linear to the reduction of the building size, but there will be some linearity to it. And again, the reduction they did was not really, not really anything which had any substantial change to the building itself. What I would like to accomplish is a building size that does not feel crowded in the corner. Again, I think, I think they're doing a decent job, but I would like to accomplish a building size which, which does not feel crowded in the corner. Now, if that means pushing it back in the corner, and if they have to reduce it to, to meet what they're trying to do behind the building towards 128, then I think that's a fair thing to ask them to do, because it feels crowded in the corner. And again, the fact that we're putting a road there in between the building and Highland Avenue changes what the intent is for that purpose, for the buffering purpose, is now those trees are literally sitting, you know, sitting right at Highland Avenue. So it takes away that, it takes away that breathing zone, that breathing, that breathing aspect of, of the comfortability, the feeling, the buffer of what it's really intended for. So, so for that reason, I would like to see the FAR reduced some. I'm not saying reduce it to 0.7, I'm not even saying reduce it to, to 1.
I hear you.
I, I think, I think what would give us, which would give us more comfortable, comfortable feeling and given, and increase the possibility of what they can do for sizing it to that corner, if we reduce it to closer to about 1.1. If we reduce it to a little closer to 1.1, I believe the tax, the tax implications will be fairly negligible to the town. I believe that would, that would give them the possibility of even a better design, what they have going on here, which, which again, would not feel crowded to the corner. So that, that's where, that's where I'm heading on the FAR.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good. I appreciate that. I hear what you're saying. Unless you have other comments specifically about the FAR, I'd like to turn to, to Gene and Natasha.
Let me see, do I have any comments specific about that? No, no, I think, I'm, I think 1.1 is more comfortable and more, and more fair
I understand.
Fair size.
I understand.
Thank you.
Gene, do you have any comment on FAR?
Yes, I do, because FAR is one of the factors that triggers our review of certain criteria. And I think height also triggers the exact same criteria, and there are five of them. And I want to mention all five, and then I want to focus on two. And the two I want to focus on are infrastructure and traffic conditions. First, we have to consider the ability, and I'm, I'm talking about the planning board's role in granting a special permit to increase the floor area ratio beyond what's allowed by right, and to increase the heights beyond what's allowed by right, and the kind of things we have to consider in doing that. And so the first thing is the ability of the existing or proposed infrastructure to adequately service the proposed facility without negatively impacting existing uses or infrastructure, including, but not limited to, water supply, drainage, sewage, natural gas, and electric service. And what I'm going to come back to, because I have a question, is sewage. Then the next is impact on traffic conditions at the site, on adjacent streets, and in nearby neighborhoods, including but not limited to the adequacy of the roads and intersections to safely and effectively provide access and egress. This process has, has an enormous focus on a traffic impact, and the mitigation that would alleviate the traffic impact. And I'm satisfied that, with the conditions that we will put in our special permit, that it appears the developer will agree to, and I won't go down the list of conditions, I think you all know what they are, but they have to do with putting in traffic signals in, at the, you know, at Goose, at Central, improving the traffic signals, and improving the timing of the traffic signals, particularly at Hunting-Gould Highland intersection, widening Gould Street, including bike paths and improved sidewalks. All of these mitigation efforts, I think, really do address the traffic issues. There is one traffic issue that I don't think we have a strategy to address, and I don't think that this project necessarily affects this issue, but many of the people who've come to our hearings have spoken of it, and that is people driving through Utica and Mills Road and going down Satcham Road. And I don't, I, I'm not sure we have a strategy to address that, but I, I want to come back to it. The other, the environmental impact of the proposal, the developer has, you know, proposed to meet the LEED's green standard, it's just terrific, the environmental impact of the project. They've gone as far, you know, they really are going to have a very good project as far as environmental impact goes. The fiscal impact of the proposal to the town, I think, is clear that there's going to be, when this project is finished and occupied and taxed, its new development will be very highly contribute to the tax base of our town. And, and then fifth is, more general, in granting a special permit, the planning board should also consider any proposed mitigation measures, and whether the proposed project's benefits to the town outweigh the cost and adverse impacts to the town. Well, they, there are, there are a lot of, of good impacts for the, from the project beyond the taxes. I've been particularly concerned about making sure the 54th setback that town meeting voted for, and this, this actually doesn't go to a special permit so much, it's just going to make sure that the dimensional rules are complied with. And I was very concerned that we need, the fire department required an emergency access way all around the building that fronts on Highland Avenue, and that was to be our 50-foot landscape setback. But the developer has responded so positively to that issue by not only proposing a large number of trees, but also having the pavers for this emergency access way be pervious pavers, so that grass will grow through them, so that from, whether you're driving along Highland Avenue or walking along the sidewalk, it will appear as though you have the 50-foot landscape setback that town meeting voted for. So, those, I mean, that just gives, I just wanted to say my general satisfaction with the project and with the mitigation that's proposed. But let me go back to these two issues. People living in the Nonet Road area express concern because they have had sewage overflow issues in the past, that the sewage coming from this development will increase the sewage flow and cause problems in their neighborhood. I went, I actually went to the, to the Plenipot Office today to review again and review the great big plan of utilities, because the developer's attorney, at the July 7th meeting, at the July 7th hearing, said that the sewage is going to flow in a different direction. Maybe it, maybe it flows down Nonet now, from the old muzzy site, but it's going to flow in a different direction across 128. So, what I was able to see from the plan is that, yes, it appears that the sewers that come from the building are going to go to Highland Avenue.
And then across the highway.
Where do they go? Where do they go from there? And then there's another sewer at the rear of the property off the garage area, where does it go from there? That is one question I would like to have addressed, and I read, I read our correspondence also on this subject from our town DPW and engineering staff, and I really couldn't find anything that answered that question. I want to make sure that the sewage from this development does not go down Nonet Road, it goes elsewhere, across 128, or wherever it goes, it doesn't go down through any neighborhood streets. So, it's just something that I don't know the answer to, and I hope that we can get an answer.
Understood. Lee, Lee, are you able to have town staff from the DPW look into that and, and respond?
Yes, I could, I'd be glad to reach out to DPW and get an answer to that question.
Okay, then, thank you. Then my other question has to do with the people cutting through Mill Street, Utica, taking a left on
Highland.
People who are going west on Highland Avenue, who have perhaps come off the Route 128 A speaker suggested that people are confused by the signage, and they go in the wrong direction. So I drove all the way down to Wellesley so I could come back that way and see what they were talking about. And indeed, it is confusing. You've got this big billboard that says there are three ways to go now. It seems to say bear right to Kendrick. No, 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 actually, they are left for Kendrick. And then it had, you know, you can go two ways on Highland Avenue. Apparently, the problem is, people are coming off the highway, when they mean to go to Newton Highlands, they realize they're heading to Needham Center, and they want to turn around. They can't take a left at Hunting, so they take a left at Mills or Utica, and then go down Satcham, and then go back in the direction they want to go. Now, this project is not going to make that problem worse, but just as the developer said, that he would, the developer would work with the town and the state with regard to improving the MBTA right-of-way, so that it might become a bike path, or it might become a paved area, so the vans could be, van transport could be on that old MBTA right-of-way, the developer will cooperate? I'm wondering if the developer will cooperate with a study of what improvements might be needed to the signage in this vicinity, so that people are not as confused and aren't coming into the situation of taking U-turns. That's the only solution I can see to that problem.
Gene, just to interrupt on that point for a second, Gene?
Yeah?
I'm just going to interrupt on that point, because we will come to, hopefully tonight, begin our discussion about certain conditions, and one of the proposals I'll make is that we adopt from, I think, a September 30 letter from GRB, from Rebecca Brown, the traffic mitigation and measures, one of which, and a section of that actually does deal with cut-throughs on Nonet, north of Highland, and then south of Highland on Satcham, by doing a pre-construction traffic study, I think of the 48 hours of measurements in both, on both of those sites, so that there is a, we do have a pre-construction measurement, and then we would compare that with post-construction, post-occupancy traffic study. And, and then also, in the in-between stage, I think, condition, as they, as they're proposing GPI, that is, additional signage for no cut-throughs, which effectively that is, and that those signs be placed, and there is some specific language the GPI has recommended, for both Nonet and, and Satcham, and certainly we can add, you know, police take note and so forth, to encourage greater enforcement to further mitigate that problem. So, I did want, I did want you to be aware, as you were talking about that, that that is an example of some of the mitigation conditions that we can look to. Do you have other specifics?
Thank you very much. I, I had failed to note that, and I had meant to review that. I know, I knew that, that the memo GPI addressed Nonet, and I didn't, I had forgotten it, it also addressed Satcham. So, those are my only comments, and generally, I want to say that I'm in favor of granting the relief, because I think the, that the traffic and other impacts of the increased FAR and the increased height can be mitigated, and also, we have also a very strong post-occupancy
Traffic study.
Yes, the, the post-occupancy. Yes, the, the post-occupancy, there's a phrase for it, that I think will, this will really be our first opportunity to engage in that, in that kind of post-occupancy traffic mitigation planning, and I think we're going to have strong conditions in that regard. All right, that's my statement, and my question remains as to the sewage flow.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you get to Natasha, may I just make a comment about the cut-throughs? And it's just a quick comment.
Yes.
Okay. As part of my regular commute from Needham into Boston, I drive on Cedar Street, which goes into Wellesley. And on the Wellesley side, before you get to Route 9, there are a lot of side streets that you could cut over from Cedar Street and cut over to Route 9.
Yes.
And, you know, what Wellesley has successfully done is to have the signage that says, no turn onto this street during rush hour, I think it's like from 7:00 AM to 9:30 AM. And Wellesley has been very successful in monitoring that. You have to get the police on board. The police have to be there and stop people, because people are going to try to cut through. And Wellesley has very successfully stopped people from using those cut-throughs. And I'm, I don't think this is something that we can condition, because we can only condition what the, what the applicant can do.
Correct.
But we, as a town, have to get, get our police department and our traffic committee on board to do what we need to do, so that it is illegal to go onto those streets unless you live there.
At certain hours.
And we need to enforce it.
Understood.
And if we can do that, I think it's very important that, that, that we accommodate those, those neighbors on all of those streets. It's on both sides of Highland Avenue if they have that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Natasha, do you have, do you have any specific, do you have any specific comments, Natasha, on floor area ratio, or any of the other special permit requests, relief?
I guess, I just have a quick question for you. Are you going to, are you going through every item individually, or do you want us to just only talk about FAR right now?
Well, I appreciate the question, because initially, this was supposed to be a point-by-point FAR, and then height and so forth, but it seems as though I can't, you know, I can't convince the whole board to do that. So, you know, I, if you have other comments, I guess you can comment now on the, on whatever you wish about the, about the relief.
Okay, so, so we're not going item by item, we're just going to talk?
I was trying to, but I haven't been able to get the board to cooperate on that.
Okay.
So comment on whatever you want to comment on, Natasha, go for it.
Mr. Chair, my comments went directly to the criteria for the granting of relief for FAR. I have not gone beyond that issue. I wanted to make that clear.
She's talking about sewage and...
I, I, I understand. Well, she's talked about sewage in as much as it's part of the review criteria that she was reflecting on, because the ball can, you know, have an impact on sewage, so, and on traffic and so on, so I understand where Jean's coming from. But I do want to give this time to Natasha, because, you know, we still have other items on our agenda that we also have to get to tonight. So Natasha, I...
So, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through, so regarding, and I went back and I looked at meeting 1, 2, 3, 4, all of the information, and, and all of the information that we've gotten from the community. So for me, the FAR being 1.35, and it's 1.21, I, I don't have a specific issue with, with the FAR, because it still complies. I do think, I, I do have some questions, or some comments about the massing of the FAR. My, my biggest question is the massing of the parking garage. And I know that, as far as I know, the height allowable is 44, and they're asking for it to be 55. And, and I, and that piece, I feel that it's, it's very big, and, and I would, you know, I would want it to continue to be 44 feet, because I feel like that, that piece is very massive. I feel like the, the main building, they've done a great job of articulating the facades in a way that changes levels and changes the scale of that building, but I feel like the parking garage, as one big parking garage feels, feels out of scale to me. And so that's kind of my overall arching thoughts about the project. I think that the landscape changes are great, I think that the, in general, the sustainability is excellent, I like what the activation of the corner and the restaurant and all of that, I feel comfortable with all of that. I do think that the, the, on the south building, the one on Highland Avenue, the roof screen is, is very plainer, and doesn't have a lot of texture, or, so I would like to see that have more articulation and kind of in depth and in materiality, and it could be that it's just that the renderings make it look very flat. And they notch the building on Highland Avenue, but, but there's no, it's still flat up, up, up above, so I would like to see some of that. And, and in general, for the parking garage, it has, the screens are within bay, so it still looks like a parking garage per se. And, and I think beyond making it 44 feet, having a continuous screen around it, that maybe ivy could grow or something like that, I think, or, or just a continuous screen, so that it doesn't necessarily look like such a massive parking garage towards the neighborhood. Wellesley College has a great one on 135, that has a screen on, on it, so that it kind of blends in with, with the, with the neighborhood. So those are my comments.
Okay, so that's, that's helpful. You're talking a little bit outside of the FAR, but I'm glad that we have your comments nevertheless. I do want to go to one of your comments, Lee, I'm going to ask you the question. I have our zoning bylaw in front of me, yet I don't see, I don't see a dimensional regulation in the zoning bylaw reflecting the height of, of a garage, but it's been a while.
Yes. It's, it's in section 411-2, sub-paragraph 1.
411?
2, supplemental dimensional regulations, the first paragraph.
Oh, yes. Which says, notwithstanding the above, the maximum height of a parking garage may be increased to 55 feet by special permit. So Natasha, just for clarity, where you had said that it can't exceed 44 feet, further in that, further in that parag, in that paragraph, it does say that by special permit, the height can be 55 feet. And to that point, I had asked early on in the hearing if, if we couldn't, if we needed that additional level on the garage, and could we remove it, frankly? And I recall we had testimony from the, from the applicant, from, I think, VHB, from their engineer, saying that, that although they're requesting a waiver for 288 parking spaces, that, and the, and the parking, that, and the, the parking garage may not be at capacity all of the time, that they, there may be instances where the, where parking would need all, where, where they would have that need for additional parking, and the consequence of not, the consequence of removing that floor, if I'm not mistaken, is effectively creating, generating overflow parking onto what would amount to the residential area on some of the other commercial property in the, in the area, which would have a worsening impact both in the residential community and the existing commercial community directly north of this property. So, so they were insistent that they can't remove, but I do like your approach to additional screening items, or additional manners in which to screen, and when we come to discussing conditions, you know, I'd certainly be open to discussing a condition that's very specific about the requirements for screening the parking garage. Jean, did you have other comments, more specifically about the height, or the restaurant use, or the retail size, or the, or any other item, or was that the substance of your comments?
I, I do want to note to myself here to remind me to say something about the restaurant use.
Yes.
There were comments, you know, I carefully reviewed every comment that was made at any of our hearings, and all those that came in, and made note of a few, you know, and one of them, people, some people don't want restaurants that serve alcohol at all. And this was in the context of also of whether this was an appropriate zone for breweries. And of course, you know, we decided it was not, and it's not an approved zone for breweries. But it does seem to me that even a restaurant that's mainly to provide lunch to people who live in the, I mean, excuse me, who work in the development, would also serve as a supper spot for people in the neighborhood, and that to have a glass of wine or a glass of beer while you're enjoying your meal is a pleasure, and I, I just don't see that we should limit the restaurants to those that do not serve alcohol.
Thank you.
That's my only comment.
Do you have other comments on any of the other elements of either the retail use, or the, the parking garage height, or any other site plan? Okay. So Artie?
I think, Mr. Chair, I think we need, I need, I really need to clarify.
Yeah.
A couple of things, but one, 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 I'll start with one, the first thing, and that is, I think there's confusion thinking that, or at least it sounds like there's a confusion, thinking that this path going around the building is going to be all grass with these, let's say, with these decorative blocks with grass going through it. It's not. This, this, this picture here with this grass going through, going through it, is only the outskirts, the five-foot outskirts of either side of a paved road. So this, this 50-foot buffer does not maintain this, a grassy look. It is going to have 10 feet of paved road. So, so again, there's, there's, I believe, Jean, you had, you had made some comment, I think, to the effect that it sounds like it's going to be all grass. My apologies if I misheard you. But no, this, this road, this area around it is not going to be this 50-foot buffer of a landscaped property.
Are you talking about the fitness path?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the, the road going around it. There's going to be 10 feet in the middle, which is paved, 5 feet on either side, which is going to be this, this decorative block with grass going through it. That's what's going on. It's not going to be...
I do realize that. I do realize that.
But again, it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a 50-foot...
Will include paved 10-foot wide fitness path. And the, the provisions for the 50-foot wide setback did allow, does allow that it can be used for walkways and paths.
I understand, no, I understand.
I have no objection to that. Of course, it has to be...
She has.
Of course, it has to be paved for safety.
No, I understand, but this, this is a 10-foot path plus five more feet on either side.
But it's not going to be a 20-foot paved path.
Yeah, but five, yes, but five more feet on either side. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really meet the, our 50-foot buffer, what we originally intended. I understand that, you know, of course, the 50-foot could have had a walking path, but this, this is going beyond that. This is going to a, within that, a 10 feet of pave, plus 5 feet of these blocks, which will be, you know, concrete, some grass going through it. It doesn't, it doesn't meet our criteria that we're trying to accomplish.
So what's, so can you, okay, while we, while we discuss other things, do you, can you point to a specific criteria that you're suggesting is not compliant?
Yeah. What's not compliant is the fact that our 50-foot set buffer is supposed to be allowing for landscape which is flowing, that's supposed to be allowing for grass, and landscape in a small path, it's not supposed to be allowing for, it's not supposed to be allowing for a 10-foot, 10-foot paved road, plus then five additional feet on either side of that, of these, of these landscape styles.
So what you're, so what you're suggesting is that, within the 50-foot buffer, that we have 20 feet of what you're calling as roadway, basically?
Well, a combination of, yeah.
Effectively.
Effective, essentially, yes.
And as a result of that, that that's not compliant?
Yes.
Okay? I just want to get, I just want to get fair, that's fine.
And greatly because of that 20-foot, we're actually, then, then all the landscaping is pushed right against the building and pushed against Highland Ave. So it doesn't, it's not really exactly meeting what we're trying to accomplish with that 50-foot buffer, plus the fact that, I mean, the trees are now literally all right along Highland Ave. How well they're going to survive, they haven't got a clue. You know, right next to the exit part of the highway there, I have no, I have no idea how well those are going to survive. I don't believe it meets what we're intending. If, if no one, if there was no project before us, and we said, what do we, you know, what do we envision? Well, we're envisioning a 50-foot buffer. We weren't envisioning within that 50-foot buffer, to some degree, a 20-foot road. Now, I know, I know I'm exaggerating it, but we weren't envisioning, we weren't envisioning this.
Okay, but, look, I, I understand that that's your comment.
I understand.
Do we have other, do you have other comments on the project? Because you've mentioned this, the second time you've mentioned it, which is fine.
Which is, and other people have mentioned the same thing multiple times, so.
So.
So I know this goes against the grain, that, I know, my, no offense intended, but, but allow me to, but allow me to, allow me to comment on this. Now, we had mentioned the, the garage, and that, you know, there's a concern about the height of the garage. I understand that there's, you know, that there's a, within the special permit, we can go higher and so forth. Also, if we go lower, that means we have less parking spaces, which means perhaps we reduce the FAR. The thing is, to some degree, my biggest problem is actually the closeness to the corner. Can they still accomplish the same FAR if they move away from the corner? Perhaps not, I'm not certain about that. But again, this is, when we're talking about the special permit of 1.35, we are looking, we are, we are putting all these things up there, what possibly could benefits to the town. The first benefit of town wasn't simply, let's increase the tax basis as much as possible, though I can appreciate that, I can appreciate that benefit. That wasn't the first thing. It would be supposed to be a special permit allowing possibilities. To some degree, this is one possibility of a bylaw with a, with a, with 10%, with, you know, 110 is 4, 40,000, with, you know, 2.5% with 2.5% of retail space, or somewhere around that, somewhere around that. So it's allowing, you know, a small fraction of some retail space. I'm not saying make it all retail space, I'm not even saying that's all you want there. What I'm saying is, what is, what is, what is truly, really special about this as far, which allows us to almost go to, you know, 75, 80%, you know, getting really close to 1.35. Again, remembering that it was 1.25 before they just took off a little bit of the glass tor, or atrium, and then they just cut off a couple of corners. It wasn't 1.25. So to some degree, the building is kind of still that.
Do you have other comments beyond what you've already stated?
Which, which is, you keep interrupting, though. Which is, you know, again, halfway is 1.025. That's halfway. And I'm not suggesting we go down to 1.025. What I'm, what I'm saying is that it's too close to Highland Ave, and, and this 50-foot buffer does not meet our general criteria of open space, of what we're, we're looking for open space. That's what we need. We're looking, no, we're talking open space. A 10, a 10-foot road going around the building, plus 5 foot of some decorative pavers on the side.
So let's, let's, let's deal with, let's deal with that.
Does not, does not, does not meet our definition of open space.
Do you want to deal with that?
So I think it's fine, I'd like to, but I think it's fair to deal with as far as pushing it back. What is your suggestion, Mr. Chair?
So, so I have a few thoughts, and again, I'm mindful on our time, because we still do have other business to attend to.
No, I do, but we have, we have to get this right, we want to get this right, Mr. Chair.
I totally understand, I agree. So, do you have, I'm not going to ask what they are, but do you have other comments as well on the project?
Basically, just the, what the best we can do to mitigate. The main, my main comments are, size is a little, I wish I could, we, we could do this a little bit in the buffer. That's, that's the two things.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's, that's helpful. Good, good.
That's the two things, Mr. Chair.
So what I'd like to do now is, Lee, Artie has suggested that the, and maybe he hasn't suggested, he's asking, if the... suggested, he's asking, if the, uh, if the fitness path and those, uh, may I?
Well, it's a.
And the, and the permeable pavers on either side would be regarded as a violation of the zoning, of the criteria in our zoning bylaw for a special permit with a setback? Is that, I suddenly can't find the zoning bylaw that I had here a minute ago, but is that, I was, I was asking, is that?
We can move it that way, violation. We can also, does it violate our intent of what we're trying to accomplish?
Well, we can only deal with the actual bylaw.
Yeah, or we can deal with the bylaw, but it can deal with the intent of the bylaw as well.
No, no, we have, our duty to adjudicate is based on the actual bylaw. So, Lee, I'm going to turn to you. Um, am I, is there, is there, does the fitness path, including the, the permeable paver on either side, comply with the dimensional requirements for the setback?
I'll read you the section. Um, it says, um, not, basically, the, the section of the bylaw establishes that 50-foot setback that, um, Arti, um, has referenced. Um, and then the qualifying sentence for the exemption states as follows. Um, notwithstanding the location or height of any building or structure, the required 50 or 20-foot setback shall be landscaped vegetative buffer, which shall be required along the after-mentioned streets, um, and said layout in order to screen the development. Driveway openings, sidewalks, walkways, and screen mechanical equipment shall be permitted in the buffer area.
So based, thank you very much, Lee. Based on, on that, and that the permeable paver is a very different surface area than a, than a, a, a road and a, um, a sidewalk, I'm actually satisfied that it's not, that this is compliant.
That, that, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't read to be compliant to, to a large degree at all.
So that's, okay, so that's.
Because these we're talking about, these we're talking about, you know, I mean, there's mention about, you know, a sidewalk. This, this is 20 feet or 10 feet of a, of an asphalt roadway and then 10.
Excuse me, excuse me. I've been sitting here listening and I'm trying to be civil here. I think Arti is mischaracterizing what is being built here. It is not an asphalt road. You keep calling it asphalt, you keep calling it a road. Okay? I think it meets the definition. The reason that we're doing what we're doing is because the fire department required, let me finish, please, Arti. You were, you were upset that people were interrupting. Please just be quiet and let me speak. Okay? The fire department required that we have the ability for the fire trucks to go along that path. No other vehicles are going to be going along that path except emergency vehicles. It's not a road that's going around for cars to get to the parking garage. It's only for emergency vehicles and it's going to be permeable so that it will give the appearance of the setback that we want to give and gives us the safety requirements that this town needs for our safety equipment to do their job.
I'm, I'm not suggesting we don't have that. I'm not.
But it's not a road and it's not asphalt.
I'm not suggesting we don't have that. This is a, this is a, a, a surface which is structurally sound to handle the weight of the fire trucks. It's not a sidewalk, which those, these bylaws talk about a sidewalk. They do not, and again, I'm not saying we don't have that. I get that. But the requirements talk about a sidewalk. They don't talk about a 10-foot wide structure for the, for the fire trucks and then additional five feet on either side with these decorative concrete blocks that have grass coming through.
So, all right, okay, so you made, you made, you made your point.
According to those wording, it does not meet it.
So, I, so I understand that in your opinion, it doesn't.
Well, according to the definition, it does not.
I understand.
It simply does not.
That in your opinion, it does not meet that. We'll continue the conversation, uh, because, uh, we're going to run out of time. We've got, it's, it's 9:45 and we still have other items on our agenda. But it sounds like, notwithstanding that issue, um, and perhaps I'd encourage you to have a conversation, Lee, with Lee, you know, offline, you know, offline for a little work there.
Instead of me having a conversation, I would encourage other, yourself and Paul to have a conversation.
Okay, so Paul, very good. We'll do that right now. We'll do it, we'll do it right now. Good point. I understand.
Living what was read to us right now does not meet, this does not meet that criteria.
I understand that that's your opinion, it doesn't. It does in my mind and in Paul's mind. Uh, Gene, does it satisfy, uh, uh, your reading of the, of the bylaw as it does with Paul and myself?
Yes, I, I have given this a lot of thought and it does satisfy my reading that this is not a driveway or a roadway. It, it is only an emergency access, um, only for emergency access. And there'd be gates, you know, there'd be gates. Uh, no, no, even the emergency vehicles have to have a, you know, system to unlock the gate to get in. Um, but also, I may have misspoken when I described the, the paths because, um, the, even the area in the middle, that's the fitness path, is going to be permeable paving.
Yes.
Um, it's not your ordinary asphalt. It's permeable paving. And then to each side of that permeable paving is going to be the blocks with the grass.
Yeah.
So they really have done the best they can, um, to make this, um, work and, and to keep the concept of a fitness path, which I don't see any harm to it.
Good, thank you, Gene. And Natasha, do you concur with Gene, Paul and myself? Or do you, that it satisfies the requirement of the bylaw? Or do you agree with Arti that it does not?
I concur with, um, you and Gene and.
Okay.
And Paul.
Okay. So we've consulted, I've taken up your good suggestion. We've consulted, we have clarity, you have clarity. But we're not going to take a vote tonight to, uh, uh, we'll have another session to, then I think at this point, we'll move directly into a discussion of the conditions of the project. Does that make sense, Lee?
Well, however you want, however you, however you want, however you want to do it, um.
There are some specific conditions, I think, that some of us may have that we wish to, you know, relay to you and discuss, but we're, we've run out of time to have that part of the discussion tonight. So, um, unless another board member has another suggestion, way to deal with that.
I was kind of getting the impression that, that where Lee was going was that she might be ready to draft, to draft a decision for us to review that would have the condition. No, you, you, you do not.
You're not going that way?
Okay.
Okay.
No, I, I think we need more, I, I need, I'm not ready to draft a decision at this point. I think I need more clarity on where we're going to, um, on the relief, on the board's agreement on the relief that's been requested and the framework for the kinds of conditions you want to have included in the draft.
So it seems like to me, it does seem to me, just to summarize this, that, um, at least, at this point, at least four out of the five board members, um, uh, agree with the requested relief of a floor area ratio of 1.21, a special permit for the height for the north building and the south building by story and by feet, the restaurant use by special permit, uh, retail by, a special permit for retail by a single tenant above the 5,750 square feet, and a, a parking garage height, a parking waiver as well. So it does seem to me that, um, while I know for the record, Arti's objections and, um, and a difference of opinion on some of these things, that there is, I think, clear direction to move forward on the request.
Mr. Chair, man.
Not yet, not yet. On the requested relief. And then, then it seems to me that there are some additional conditions. It looks like, uh, uh, you know, I think we probably all would agree to the conditions set for, uh, the conditions proposed by, uh, GPI in their letter of September 29. I misspoke before when I said September 30. Um, and in addition to that, I think Natasha would like to propose some more specific conditions on screening for the parking garage, um, the, uh, the mechanicals for the, for the rooftop. And in addition to that, adding in some, um, mix of additional architectural elements to break up the facade of the north building facing Gould Street. I apologize, Natasha, if I'm slightly mischaracterizing it, but I think that's a fair summary. And I think that's the general direction of the, you know, of the conditions, in addition to what we've already had, uh, uh, received from our other town departments, including the Department of Health, um, you know, and the requirements that we'll have to ensure compliance with Article 11 and then also with, um, you know, and the other state and federal, um, requirements, both specifically for a biolab, uh, at a BSL Level 1 and 2, and also we'd have a condition that there won't be a BSL Level 3 or 4. And then we'd have a, a traditional, uh, conditions that we always have with respect to, uh, uh, these types of, um, mixed uses of commercial, including a retail restaurant and so forth, from the Department of Health. So I think we're pretty close to, to being there.
Um, I have a question on conditions.
Yeah.
Do we need to insert conditions, which I believe that we do, to specifically require the developer to perform the, um, uh, mitigation, um, uh, that the develop, the traffic mitigation specifically, um, that the developer has agreed to do, which actually are not really shown on the plan, like for example, the, uh, traffic light at, at the intersection of Gould Street and Central Avenue?
Right.
And, and the reconfiguring of the road there?
Right.
Uh, probably, I don't know whether we need specific conditions, we probably, because they do show on the plan, but, but perhaps we need to expound on that, um, about how Gould Street will be reconfigured and the bicycle path and the sidewalks.
I understand.
And the traffic lights and all that.
So, Lee, how do we handle that?
Needs to be spelled out.
Um, I'll, I'll just, I'll need to spell that out in, in, in the draft that I've put together.
Okay. I think, Alex, we have a hard out at 10, is that right?
Well, I, I think there's one other issue. I mean, I don't know that we've really resolved the issue of the garage, of the garage height. Um, and I think Natasha will have to communicate where she is on that.
Okay, Natasha, your hand is up. I'm just mindful of the time, but I just, before actually Natasha, you, you close it, I just want to get resolution. Do we have a hard out at 10?
I don't have to be anywhere. I just don't feel well.
Oh, I know. We hear you.
I can't, I cannot go until midnight.
No, 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 I don't intend us to. I, I, uh, but we may go to, it was 10:10, but I.
That's fine.
Yeah, but it's already 10 minutes of 10.
I know. So, thank you very much. I understand, uh, and I know what that's like, and, uh, thank you for being here in spite of being sick. Natasha, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a, a question. I mean, the, just the, the garage seems disproportionately high to the building. So I was just, I wanted to hear from Gene and Paul and Arti and you, what you, what you thought.
Well, the issue that I have, I think the chair mentioned before that, um, um, that it was discussed previously, which is that what you're talking about doing is taking off an entire level from the garage, which creates removing a lot of parking spaces.
77 or 177, I can't remember exactly what it is.
I don't know whether we have the room to remove all those parking spaces. I don't know where we, where we fit enough parking spaces to cover the parking requirements that this project's going to have. As it is, we have a waiver request, I think, for more than 200 spaces.
That's right, almost 300.
And so if you lop off this, this.
We're close to 400 spaces we lose.
It'll be close to a waiver of 400 spaces. I, I think we need to go back to see whether, whether, um, we, we have enough spaces and I believe that the.
Traffic engineer of the peer reviewer hasn't.
But that's VH.
No, but our peer reviewer, I, I don't think has recommended to review, has recommended to remove an additional, I don't know, 77 or 177 spaces.
Natasha, I understand where you're coming from, but parking's a problem.
Gene, Gene, go ahead.
Um, there are two factors here that make me comfortable with the garage as proposed. Um, it is substantially set back from the roadways. I believe it's a 200-foot required setback. Um, and it, it, there's an elevation difference, uh, sometimes referred to as a bowl in the, in the rear of the property, so that the, a garage will be at a lower elevation, even if it is five stories tall, it'll start at a lower elevation. So with those two factors, the distance from, um, the visibility from this, from the town roads, it might be visible from the offer ramp, but I don't really care if it is or not. Um, but as far as, um, visibility from the roads, the fact that it'll be lower elevation and setback 200 feet, I'm satisfied with it as proposed. Um, I like the idea of having some fabric, but I, I think that was proposed, but Natasha has a different idea on that. If that is something that can be articulated in a way that they can easily comply with it without coming back to us, um, I'd be okay, sure. But I, I don't, I haven't, I don't really feel strongly one way or another.
Thank you. And, uh, Arti?
Uh, I mean, it's a tough one. I mean, obviously, um, you know how I feel about, you know, the basic size of the structure, so there's a, there's a conflict as far as, well, if the parking garage goes down, the, the FAR would probably have to come down in order to try to have enough parking for the, of the allowable parking. I, I appreciate the fact that the, there is an elevation change, you know, a topography change going down there, which can certainly mitigate some of the height differential, so I can appreciate that. Um, you know, certainly opposite this particular, opposite this area is the Wing, uh, the Wingate buildings over there. Um, you know, you know, separating all the conflicts I have with various types of things. If they, if they put the right material out there, it, it certainly could mitigate the visual aspect of the parking garage. Um, we have been talking about, you know, it's been, it's been a while, the number of meetings that's been brought up, this, the height of the parking garage has been brought up. It isn't, this isn't the first time this has been brought up. We just haven't really talked about it much since before now. And to some degree, you know, yes, we did bring it up to the, uh, the owners and they did talk about the amount of spaces that were being taken away. Um, I'm a little hard, I'm a little hard pressed on this.
I hear that.
Yeah, I'm a little hard pressed on this one. I'm not sure.
So, I, so Natasha, Arti's kind, you know, Arti's kind of unresolved on it.
Yeah, unresolved right now.
I think Gene, myself and Paul are, and ultimately, what it comes down to for me is, uh, it's one of those things, like, do you have, how big of a nap, a knapsack do you take to school? If you, you know, my son takes a knapsack and he doesn't have enough room for the book, he leaves the book at school. It's the kind of thing where you'd rather have the space, not necessarily use it at full capacity 100% of the time, but, you know, we would all be, uh, pretty upset if, um, if, if we needed it and did not have it and could not subsequently build it. So that's really, you know, the, the challenge with this. So, but I, I do want to put a pin in this, in our deliberation at this time, because I want to get Alex out of here as quickly as we can, and we still have other items on our agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one, one useful thing to note is that, you know, there's a phrase, if you build, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If, if you build it, they will come. There's that phrase. And that, that always seems to happen. Roads getting wider, garages being, if you build it, they will come. And so then, then the opposite of that is, well, if you don't build it, then they have to find a different way to get there. So, you know, since everyone's talking about finding a way to force people to find different modes of public transportation, if we take away that floor, they will be forced to rethink their, rethink the strategy.
No, that's actually not true.
Well.
The reason why that's not true is they can just, is, is they can increase their parking wa- waiver. In other words, the parking waiver is not necessarily, the parking.
No, I understand that.
But there is a balance too.
Artie's point is if the spaces aren't there and the parking lot gets filled up, then the employees are going to have to find an alternative method of.
Transportation.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I misunderstood that.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, a different mode of transportation to get there. And the company itself may rethink their, not their size and strategy, may think their, rethink their business, their strategy of how, what they're, how they're going to, their access, their encouragement of what they're doing.
Yeah, I understand.
And that by itself has done a bad thing.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that that works.
I understand. I appreciate that, Paul.
That's the question.
I totally appreciate that.
Again, I'm glad for the conversation. I think this has been instructive, Lee. I think you have some clarity. But we, I'm mindful of the time. I'm mindful that, you know, Alex, who is so instrumental in getting all of this done, is feeling, is unwell. We know, all know what that's like. So I now want to turn our attention to the next item on our agenda, which is the Board of Appeals. There are two cases.
Do we get a motion to continue this?
No, 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 because we'll just go into deliberation at our next moment.
Oh, okay.
So we don't.
Okay.
So the first item from the Board of Appeals is 12 Clark Road, which is an application to demolish a three-car garage and to, and to build a four-car garage. Does anyone have any comment on this? Paul, do you have any comment?
I have no comment, and I am prepared to make a motion that we, that we say no comment.
I'm going to not, okay. We're not having that motion yet, but Artie, do you have any comment on it?
Just at some point, you know, at some point, we have to say no.
Okay, understood. Jean, do you have a comment? And Natasha, do you have a comment?
No comment.
Okay.
Jean's talking.
I would support a motion for no comment, and, but the reason is, at first, I thought, oh, no, four-car garage. But first of all, this is a one-acre lot. Second of all, the driveway, it's sideways to the front of the property rather than facing the front of the property.
That's right.
Third factor, setback 50 feet. So with those three factors, I would make no comment.
So, Paul, I welcome your motion at this time.
I move that we report no comment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Artie seconds that. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We vote no comment. On 69 High Street, we have an application for an ADU. They're going to demolish a section of the house and then build in addition to accommodate the ADU. But what I don't understand, and Lee, forgive me if I'm misunderstanding this, but it looked as though on the application form, their forms of egress are directly into the primary building. But I thought that the ADUs required access to the outdoors directly. Forgive me for my pronunciation of outdoors. I can't help where I'm from.
If I may comment, I.
Yes, please.
Respond, but my memory is that we specifically require one of the means of egress.
Yes, one.
To be two, the main dwelling. And when it comes to other means of egress, we, we want, we don't want them to refund facing so it looks like a two-family house. But I don't know that we have a specific rule saying that they require two means of egress, one of them has to be directly to the outdoors. I would think that would be a building, a state building code issue to be decided by the building inspector.
So then I would, I would probably move the comment, or have someone move the comment, the, that the zoning board look into compliance with their current plan for egress. Is that reasonable?
And Jean.
Yeah, as opposed to you, you know, looking through the zoning bylaw right now in the state building code.
Well, I guess we would, I mean, would expect that anyway, that the building commissioner would comment on something that isn't in compliance with the state building code.
But we can, we can still make the comment that we can ask the zoning board of appeals before they grant the permit.
To ensure compliance for.
To make, to consult with the building commissioner to make sure that it's in compliance with the building code.
Sounds like a motion.
So moved by Paul.
Yep.
Jean, are you seconding that?
I will second that.
Seconded by Jean. Any discussion on the motion? Any, actually, we have a motion, but any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda is the minutes, and we have minutes from, we have two minutes in our packet. We have minutes from August 16 and August 23. On August the 16th, Jean, again, you've done a great job in the redlining. I think you had one comment or question for us at the very end.
Yeah, I always yellow-mark the questions, and I had one.
I'm so happy for what she does.
It is, on the very last page, "Report from Planning Director and Board Members." Second paragraph. She noted the draft environmental report came out. I assume that is related to the Muzzy site? Or would you say related to the, to the development of 5, whatever the address is?
Yes, it was 557 Highland Avenue.
All right. So if we say related to the development of 557.
Good.
557 Highland Avenue. All right, and everything else I heard in redlining, so it's all good.
Artie, would you like to make a motion? We accept the minutes of August 16.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Artie to accept the minutes of August 16 as adjusted and revised and redlined. Jean, thanks for doing the work.
Second.
I'd like a second. We have a second by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The last minutes we have are August 23. I saw no comment from Jean. I had no comment. Anyone else have any comment on the minutes of the 23rd?
No.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of August 23?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of August 23.
Mr. Chair, before I vote, is what you're looking at, it does have the redlining?
On August 23?
What's that?
For the minutes of August 23?
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page.
Okay, no problem.
I get it.
So we have a motion by Artie Crocker to approve the minutes of August 23. A second?
Second.
By Paul Alpert. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We pass the minutes of August 23. We have some correspondence, which I'll read into the minutes in a moment, a report from the planning director and planning board members.
Hearing none?
Oh, yes, I just want to call out the fact that we are, we have a community, the Housing Plan Working Group plans to present the draft housing plan to the community. I think it's November the 15th is the date, and I'm hoping that all of you will be able to attend and participate in that meeting.
Let me, please let me check the date, Lee. I just want to be sure of that.
Is it the 15th?
Because for some reason.
The 16th. The 16th.
It is the 16th.
And it's in Powers Hall.
Yeah, it's the 16th at 7:15 PM at Powers Hall, and we hope for a good turnout, so anything you can do to spread the word.
No, 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 that's for the Housing Plan Working Group. Our next meeting is the 15th. Very good. Well, thank you for that. I'm eagerly anticipating that. Any other reports from board members? Alex relieved, and without that, just to note, we've received the following correspondence, which I categorize into four separate areas. We have our usual request from the Norfolk Register of Deeds to update the signing authority, which, do we have that printed out here? We'll sign it. It's okay. We'll get it, no problem. We have, and that was by letter dated October 12, and we do, you'll hear from planning staff for us to be able to sign that and send it back to the registry of deeds for the Norfolk County. We have, with respect to the Foster property, received an email dated October 26 from Lisa Stravropoulos, Seropolis. And we've received an email on October 25 from Jeff Katz advocating for greater housing density in Needham Center, speaking of the housing effort on behalf of Jean and Natasha. And then lastly, we have a number of comments received by email with respect to the Bullfinch One dated October 7 from Chia Ling Chan. We received another from Emily Pick dated October 4. Another email October 4 from Lin Yu and Neil. Another email October 5 from Sherry Steer. An email dated October 5 from Alexa, I think in her email at the end of it, she signed it, Akersi. We received October 5 from Larry Nathanson, an email. That, that email actually asked a question about the pre-construction study for NOAANet, so I don't know if we're able to respond on that. But that would be a condition that we would require when we get to that part of the, of the application. We have an email October 6 from Bruno Di Fazio, an email from Gilad and Rachel Skolnick dated October 10. We have an email from Chris Ruggieri, October 14. We receive October 21 an email from Tamara Small. So we thank the members of the public, our residents and neighbors for their comments and questions, and please keep them coming. With that, I think I'll entertain a motion in honor of Alex.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, just in all due respect, Mr. Chair. So I think it's only fair, and I understand when he said, you know, he said, talking to Lee about, you know, the requirements for the setback.
Yeah.
I think it's fair, you know, if you're saying, if I do it, maybe we should all confirm with the, if this really truly fits that.
We did.
Hold on. No, 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 we asked, we didn't, we didn't.
Artie.
See, hold on. Please let me finish.
I'm agreeing with you.
No, please let me finish, Paul. Okay, thank you. No, thank you. So I think we should. But one thing I'm getting at is this, okay? If we're going to allow this, what that means is, again, I never said there shouldn't be the fire access there. And I think, because the fact is, it will look like a road. If we're going to, if this is going to count as part of the buffer for this, then that means it's always going to be counted as, that means something that visually looks like a road but is for fire access is always going to count as part of the buffer, but that's not what we intend. I won't even make a comment, I won't even, I won't even make a comment on my feeling. If we're going to allow it, it always has to be allowed, is what I'm getting at. I think we should all talk to Lee separately as far as what actually, what actually, the bylaw actually says. And so I think it, because again, whatever we do, I guess I'll use the word precedent, that's what's going on. I won't say how I feel, you know how I feel, but I won't say it again. But that's what's going to happen. So that's what we have, when we want to listen, that's what we have to keep in mind.
So I'm going to agree with you. I'm going to agree with you. I have always been concerned about making a decision because we can't make a decision and then not follow it in the future because we set precedent. And I've always, you know, I've been on this board for seven years, and I've been stressing that for seven years. You know, what, what, what we do, we stress precedent. And so we are still in deliberations. We're going to meet and discuss this further when we meet again. And so I agree with you that we should all take another look at the bylaw. Now, whether we want to discuss it with Lee or not is up to each individual, but I think we should all take another look at the bylaw and satisfy ourselves.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for this suggestion.
Yeah, no, I, with all due respect, seriously.
I get that. I get that. All respect is taken. With that, and respecting Alex in her honor of our.
Move, we adjourn. Seconded.
Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all. Good night.
Go home, Alex.
You guys?
Yes.
Oh, yes.